We're gonna start the council meeting if you could come to order please. Grab a chair if you can. I think it's on. Just reconvened from a special closed session. Okay, thank you. Testing now, that's real good. Meredith, you want to breathe in, thank you. We just reconvened from our closed session. We didn't finish all the items, but I'll ask the city attorney to make any report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. In closed session this evening, the council met Conference of Real Property Negotiators and provided direction to staff on that item. There was no reportable action. Item two, Conference of Legal Counselant anticipated litigation. That item, the council has not yet met on and will reconvene after the meeting. Third item, Conference of Legal Counselant anticipated litigation, significant exposure. The council received briefing from legal counsel and there's no reportable action. Last item, Conference of Labor Negotiator regarding GPOA and GPSU negotiations. The council received an update from negotiators and provided direction and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. We will now start our regular city council meeting, 7:02. If I could have the roll call, please.
Councilor Ms. Payne, here. Claire?
Here.
Payne, Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here, thank you. I'd like everyone to rise for a silent prayer and a moment of silence. And if you would remain standing after we conclude that for the flag salute presented to us by Cub Scout PAC 84. Den four, den three, I'm sorry.
Will the audience please rise for the presentations of the colors? Color guards advance. Prepare the post colors, post colors. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, our nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, with all his glory. See you.
Okay, thank you scouts. If we could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. At this time, is there any agenda approval additions or deletions, council members? None? If there are none, we'll move into presentations. Liz?
Okay, the first one is a presentation of award for caring and compassion, character awards. I believe Barbara Payne will be presenting the award for the Galt Community of Character Coalition.
Okay, if Connie Gakel would join me at this time at the podium. Connie has made the nomination for this individual and I'm gonna ask her to read the description and then if that person would come forward, we'll make the presentation. Hey, I didn't really make this. My husband did, but we both agreed on it. We nominated Ray Cormier, I can't hear you, for demonstrating caring and compassion. He does so many things, but we picked out one that we wanted to share. We have a mutual acquaintance whose wife has a severe case of Alzheimer's disease and if any of y'all have been privy to that type of disease, it can be very rough. And he decided he wanted to keep his wife at home rather than take her to the nursing care facility. And her disease is very far advanced and there's a lot of problems. And Ray took it upon himself, he wasn't even asked, he says, "You know what, I will stay with her a couple of times a week." He's one of the few people that she doesn't cite. And so he goes and stays with her while her husband goes out and does minor things like paying bills, going to the grocery store, just getting out away from the stress. So, we would like to recognize Ray Cormier for caring and compassion as a, kind of like an unsung hero whose kindness and compassion greatly contributes to the quality of life for others. Thank you. And if Letitia Luon would come for the next presentation? This presentation is made by the Community of Character Coalition. We recognize outstanding citizens for some of these wonderful character traits that represent our city.
And do you want to read your description and who it's to? This is for Pastor Walt Thayer and for Joanne Thayer. The women of Meadows Depot would like to nominate Pastor Walt Thayer and his wife, Joanne Thayer, for their caring and compassion for those in recovery. Pastor Thayer and Joanne Thayer minister to women who are mostly court appointed and housed at Meadows Depot. They are volunteers. Their unconditional love and care for us has changed some of those considered as the most lost of lost souls. They demonstrate their love for the women of Meadows as their own children. They always, they are always there when we call, whether for a shoulder to cry on or a ride to the doctor. Nobody pays them for their services. They take this on by themselves. Personal recovery would never exist for many of us without their help. They have given us the gift of loving ourselves through our spiritual lives, which is something that the majority of the women who have come and left Meadows could never have imagined without their help.
I just wanna thank everybody for the awards. And I just wanna thank the girls from Meadows for being there for us because they actually, the girls from Meadows are actually part of our life also. God has just done a wonderful job, it does, for us to be able to go to Meadows. And I just praise Him and thank Him for all that we're able to do. The final group that we want to honor is South County Services. So if representatives from South County Services would come up at this time. I'm gonna read this, I don't want you braving on yourself. "South County Services, a community safety net for the people of the greater Galt area." Glenna, you're here. You're supposed to read this, not me. No, I knew there was something wrong when I was reading this. Glenna is the person that has nominated South County Services, so I'm gonna make her read what she wrote.
This is to Mary Lou Powers and staff, Gloria Rodriguez, Jennifer Kalloy, Peggy Forsyth Andrews. We're sorry, some of the staff couldn't be here tonight because they're ill. "South County Services, a community safety net for the people of the greater Galt area under the direction of Mary Lou Powers is most deserving of the Galt Community of Character Award for caring and compassion. Their dedication to our diverse community is outstanding. Mary Lou and staff work all year long to help those in need in our community, especially during the holiday season and hard economic times, especially this year. They serve individuals, families, and seniors, whether the need is for food, help to stay in their homes, assistance with transportation, access to medical exams, help with paperwork for senior companions. South County Services doing the hard work with a small staff and a strong corps of volunteers. They accomplish this work extremely well, consistently demonstrating caring and compassion. They make Galt a better community for everyone year after year. Mary Lou Powers and her staff provide the leadership for promoting all our character traits throughout Galt. Responsibility, integrity, honesty, respect, pride in community, and caring and compassion. It's with deep gratitude and appreciation that we recognize you, we salute you, and we thank you, South County Services, for your remarkable service to the community of Galt."
I do wanna say a few words, and it's really not on my behalf. I'm really disappointed that my staff of three are all ill this evening. I think most of the credit goes to them. They're three wonderful women who care a lot about our community. And I just wanna say their names one more time. Peggy Forsyth Andrews, Jennifer Kalloy, and Gloria Rodriguez. And I also wanna thank all of our volunteers who help with over 1,000 hours of volunteer work every year to support our organization. Thank you very much.
It is indeed an honor to have the opportunity to recognize some of the people that represents the heart and soul of our community. Thank you all for coming tonight and for being part of this.
Okay, next presentation.
Youth Master Plan Presentation by the Galt Area Youth Coalition.
Okay, hi, we're from the Galt Area Youth Coalition and mainly it's all about the Youth Master Plan. And I'm Tiffany Green. I'm seventeen and a senior at Galt High.
I'm Natalie Nunez. I'm a junior at Galt High School.
Oh, and, sorry, we couldn't make it today, but we have Catherine Knight, Billian.
Yeah, I'm Catherine Knight, I'm thirteen and I go to MacArthur.
Okay, and here's Patricia.
I'm Patricia St. Jenny, with Millard District and the head of business.
I'm Jonathan Van, with the Galt Area Youth Coalition and help with United Physicians.
I'm Jan Maria with the Galt Area Youth Coalition.
Sorry about that. The Galt Area Youth Coalition has been here now for almost three years and it's funded through the REACH initiative with Sierra Health Foundation. This represents the umbrella of the Galt Area Youth Coalition. And although the Youth Master Plan was actually spearheaded by Mr. Meredith here, Cass come and picked it up and what's really been spearheading it since then is the Galt Area Youth Coalition. And if you think of that as kind of like this umbrella where other youth activities happen under it. We have the, of course, the Youth Committee that reports to you and two of our members tonight also are in the Youth Committee. You can raise your hands. They're there. The, let's see this, oh, compact that was signed by the council. Something emerged calls under the Galt Area Youth Committee. Youth Development is really the framework that we're bringing into our community at all levels. And that's a social host ordinance that we'll be speaking about briefly at the end of our presentation.
The Youth Master Plan, its purpose is mainly for the youth. It's run by the adults and the youth and the youth have a lot to say in it. And it's helped greatly because we, as the youth, what we need and they give it to us and they put a lot of input to us. It offers a vision for the future, what youth want and what youth need. Effectively coordinate the services, supports, and opportunities that youth need to thrive, such as learning, working, thriving, connecting, and leading. So we want all of these to be connected into this and to promote all these expectations. We like to develop positive attitudes, skills, and behaviors. We want the Youth Master Plan to be, to help the youth and by helping the youth, we just help the future.
And for the content, really, it's all about personal experiences and we really want the community to get engaged because right now, the community really kind of is engaged, but not as engaged as we want it to be. We want, like, everybody to be participating and all that. And we have brochures, I don't know if we handed them out. Yeah, we have brochures for all you. If you're not familiar with the Master Plan and all the stuff that is involved with it, then yeah. It's all right here.
I'm gonna ask the girls to give some examples because what has happened over this last year, there's been lots of meetings. And during the summertime, our youth and adults, and there's lots of adults in this room that have been part of this meeting. Every Friday morning, they set the agenda in terms of from nine to eleven, they were working. And they, like you said, you know, these are teenagers, they want to be there at nine in the morning. And our chief was there many of those times. Monica from Park and Rock was there. A lot of people from the community were there. Give some specific examples.
Okay, so in the mornings, we would go to a library at Greer and so many people would be there. It's not, it wasn't even adults, just adults or just youth. It was a mixture of both of youth and adults. And we all got into groups and we decided what, like, it would be the early childhood, elementary, middle school, high school, and young adults. And we got into groups and the groups were mixed. So it wasn't, like, the high school, the high school wasn't just high school kids, it was adults. It was young kids that are going into high school. So we got into groups and we were diverse and we put input and we said what we wanted to see happen and what we wanted, or what the youth felt like they needed and what we felt like they needed. And just like everyone working together, putting their own input, not just one group of people, just adults, or just the youth. It was both of us working together and we just created a nice plan, everything that helped and that could just benefit the future a lot.
And the groups that we mainly worked on and focused on were from early childhood, from ages zero to five, from elementary, six to ten, middle school, eleven and thirteen, high school, fourteen and eighteen, and young adults from nineteen twenty-four. And a whole bunch of us, like Natalie said, a whole bunch of us just mixed up in groups with a whole bunch of different people we didn't know. We all connected. And we thought of a whole bunch of new ways that we could help our community and how it would benefit and all that.
So our young people have done a lot of work as we begin creating this framework for our community. And now it's really the time for the community to come forward with some additional commitments. We're still working on this framework. We're having another community forum in February. But we've gathered a lot of input and now the young people are taking this information out to the community groups, to business, to our service clubs, to the school districts, and PTA, District Advisory Committee meetings. One of the first steps was the City of Galt and the two Galt School Districts supporting the compact for young people. And the compact addresses some key areas that overlap with our master plan. And that is investing in youth, supporting policy decisions that support young people, providing opportunities in the community for youth to become engaged, providing high-quality education programs during school and after school. And a lot of that work has been going on for many years in Galt. And so what the framework does is solidify some of what we're doing and then look to address some of the pressing needs and issues in the community. How can we better support young people? Or what are some of the areas where there are gaps in services? Whether they're at particular age groups or particular times of day or weekend opportunities. So that's where we're, what we're doing now is presenting the draft master plan to the community and then asking for your continued support and input and support in funding and resources. A lot of the work in the last four years, it's been supported through grant funding, in particular, the Sierra Health Foundation's REACH initiative. That grant funding is winding down. Our REACH funds end as of the end of March. So how we continue this work and the staff, and it takes tremendous commitment by educators and community members to work with young people and prepare. And so we want to continue these efforts. So we'll continue to seek grant funds and be asking for additional resources from the community to support the work we've begun. The plan is just the beginning and now it's time we continue to implement some of the good things in the community.
John, before you step down, you're open to get input from everybody in the community. And I know there's a lot of people out there that would like to give their ideas of what the needs are for the youth. So how would they get included in this Youth Master Plan?
One opportunity would be the forum in February that is coming up. Another is we're gathering February seventeenth, Chabola Center. Another opportunity is through contact with Janet, Patricia, or myself. All of us can be reached through REACH at, and I think that's on a post-it or not? Through our email or district webpage, but REACH, R-E-A-C-H-Galt, K-12, C-A-U-S. It's our district email. And then presentations to the community, but yes, we need input from faith-based and the community groups and school folks as well. Okay, Barbara?
If I could, to the three young ladies who spoke to us this evening, I'm very impressed with your poise and your presentation. And a lot of people get very nervous to be where you are right now and I think you did a great job of that. And to the three big kids in the back, again, our continued thanks to you. This has been truly a labor of love for each of you and you've gone so far and above so many things in what you do for our community and this is just one more of them. So, thank you again.
Do you have any questions for the young people?
Not me, they did such a great presentation that-
I have one comment. Remember when we discussed this several years ago, it was only a fleeting dream. Look how far we've all come and you guys have come. And I really appreciate it, I think we all do. You've done a lot. You can see we have council members that are involved, you have other elected officials, and you have the citizens of this community and the parents. And you're right, we do need more of us involved. So, and again, I'd just like to add, that's February the seventeenth, that's the Chabola Center, and at what time?
Six to eight.
Six to eight. Yep, so come by for a while.
We wanna thank you for listening to us and giving us a chance to tell you what our goals are and what we wanna see in our community and we put a lot of work into it and we are very happy to present this to you guys and maybe get some help and stuff.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Before you leave, one more thing that's part of your upcoming project that you're gonna need the council to agree to is you're going to be doing a short survey, a two-page survey, visiting our different departments with the permission of the council and the staff and find out if the youth are involved either like in a mentoring program, if there is anything related to our city departments. So, I don't know, maybe that's something that we need to agendize for our next meeting, but I just thought while they were here, I would bring that forward, that that's a project that they have coming up with the permission of the city.
There's one other thing that I do wanna mention. There, part of what we've been working on is we're very concerned about alcohol and other drug use in our community and how that affects our youth. And one of the things that's happening throughout Sacramento County and the different cities in Sacramento is that many of us are working on social host ordinance. I hope that information appeared in your packet. Elgro has already passed this. Citratite, I think it's passed it. I know the other cities are working on it. And we'd like to propose that, ask you if we could begin working on such a host program here, social host program. And what it does is it makes the family available, excuse me, responsible if alcohol is served to children in their house. They're responsible for what happens afterwards. And many people think that's part of the law now and it's not. And it's like I said, Elgro has already passed this ordinance, there's a big wave to go in this direction. There's some of us that would like to go ahead on this, but we were told that we need to come talk to you. I know that would, that would have to be addressed at some other point. And again, we have youth that wanna move forward on this. So I'd like to suggest that that could be looked at down the road also. Again, it's up and under all these other activities that they're involved with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a suggestion.
Yes.
We have, it sounds to me like, and the chief and I spoke briefly, that maybe you'd be interested in coming to our safety committee.
Absolutely.
And we have a little dilemma with a couple of meetings going at the same time. Not to throw the chief under the bus, but I mean, he kinda sets up the meetings for us. So I already told him that I would say something, so maybe you can get with him and maybe someone you could. The meetings are open to the public and we encourage that. So it sounds to me like this is something that would be very important and come to the safety committee.
Right, well then, we'll talk later this weekend.
He may have talked to you already, I don't know.
Not yet, but yeah, lots of contact there. Thank you so much. By the way, I do want to flag our chief, he's been very, very involved with this whole process.
I know he has.
Yeah, fantastic.
They've done a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to public comment. I got a statement, please. We'll move to public comment, I got a statement, please.
Okay, under Government Code Section 5495, 4.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Okay, Gene Endicott?
Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to provide a brief update on some upcoming activities related to the state high-speed train project. Uh, again, my name is Gene Endicott, I handle communications and outreach on that project in the Sacramento area and in San Joaquin County. And, what I specifically wanted to make you aware of are some upcoming scoping meetings related to the environmental impact report process. I know some of you are at least generally aware of this already, but I wanted to make sure as a group you knew what was coming, uh, and also the community down here as well. And, there'll be more information, uh, coming through mail and, and, uh, newspaper advertisements and so forth about these meetings, but I thought this was a good opportunity to share information as well. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm just going to briefly read some of my notes here. Uh, the California High-Speed Rail Authority will host public scoping meetings along the Merced to Sacramento Project Section later in January to provide the public with an opportunity to learn about the project, ask questions and provide feedback about what project alternatives and environmental issues should be evaluated in the environmental impact report. The Merced to Sacramento section of the high-speed train system includes the city of Sacramento south to the city of Merced. Proposed route alternatives generally follow the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, the Central California Tracton, or Union Pacific railroads throughout this section. Stations are proposed in Sacramento, Stockton, Modesto, and Merced. Uh, open house meetings, the scoping meetings I referenced a minute ago, for this Merced to Sacramento section are scheduled as follows. January twentieth in Stockton at the San Joaquin Council of Governments, 555 East Weber Avenue. January twenty-first in Merced, at the Merced Senior Center. January twenty-seventh in Sacramento at the Amtrak Depot at 301 I Street. And, January twenty-eighth in Modesto at the Modesto Center Plaza. They all are scheduled for, uh, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Uh, scoping and these open house meetings are the first opportunity to become involved in the Merced to Sacramento Project Level Environmental Impact Report. During the scoping process, the public, as well as city, county, state, and federal agencies, have an opportunity to provide comments on project alternatives and environmental impacts to be evaluated. The purpose of the scoping process is to identify public and agency concerns early in the process, receive input on alternatives and issues that will be examined in the draft environmental impact report, and facilitate an efficient environmental impact report process. Uh, there's additional information available on the California High-Speed Rail Authority website. And, I should note that comments on the Merced to Sacramento High-Speed Train Project will be accepted until Wednesday, February twenty-sixth. Uh, last thing I wanted to mention, as I did bring, these are hot off the press, I literally just picked this, these up about one o'clock this afternoon, some brochures that include information on the scoping meeting schedule I just mentioned and some additional background that you might find useful, a few extra copies that members of the public might also want, so I'm not sure where you'd like for me to leave these, I'm happy to, to do that. So, anyway, thank you very much for the time, I very much appreciate it and, uh, look forward to hopefully having a lot of folks from Galt participating in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, if I could, I want to thank you again, I, I told the council a couple of months ago that, uh, he and I had met and discussed that and he'd be coming to let us know when the dates had been set, which obviously they have now been set. And, to keep everyone abreast of sort of a parallel effort to what's going on, the other, well, two of the other groups I'm working with, in particular though, the San Joaquin Valley Rail Commission, we're already working on some of the scoping for the section he's referring to, the Merced to Sacramento, uh, sort of under a joint MOU with the High-Speed Rail Commission. Because, in the early phases of moving towards the high-speed rail, there is both funding and intent to perhaps get some commuter rail service going using the right-of-way or procuring right-of-way in advance of that to move it forward. So, this other subgroup we're a part of, and I represent, uh, is working jointly with what they're trying to ultimately achieve with the high-speed rail. Folks, uh, anywhere in the city should be very interested in this because of the potential alignment that may or may not be used for the ultimate high-speed rail or the interim commuter rail. So, I would suggest everyone kind of stay abreast of it. Certainly, if you have the time, go to one of the scoping meetings, because this is the time to be heard with issues about alignment and other things. So, very important, uh, the state's already passed bonding monies for this program, so it's, it's something I think everyone ought to try and keep track of. Our subcommittee will be meeting in Stockton and the other committee, the San Joaquin Rail Commission, will be meeting in Merced, February twelfth, I want to say. So, those meetings will be going on also. So, we'll keep everyone abreast and, as I mentioned, SECOG's also got a subcommittee that Steve Cohen from City of Sacramento and I head for SECOG to also liaise on to this group and the other. So, has a lot of potential for our city and we should definitely stay involved, so thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, John, um, John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, hi, I live in City of Galt. Uh, I'd just like to say that I'm elated tonight that Greg, the Public Works Director, uh, has obtained the revolving fund loan. And, I know how much work had to been involved, the staff also involved in that. Uh, he, he explained to us, there was a stack, a pile of paperwork that high that he had to go through to meet the requirements of the revolving fund loan. And, uh, that, that pile of paperwork that he was talking about saved the city six-point-three million dollars. I had a financial calculator, I punched in the sixteen-point-six million dollars loan and it, and, and, uh, and then I punched in the, the same amount, uh, I mean, I punched in the amount it, for the, uh, what it would have cost for a conventional loan. I called Inez, the public, uh, the finance director, I asked her what interest rate a conventional loan would be. She said it would be five-point-three percent. I punched that into the financial calculator and it came up to, um, ten-point-three million dollars over twenty years. And, when we add what it would cost to float a bond for that, would be another half a million dollars, which would come to ten-point-eight million dollars. So, the difference, uh, from, uh, what it actually cost us, the ten-point-eight million minus the four-point-five million which it actually cost us for the loan, we've saved six-point-three million dollars, uh, on, on our loan. So, I'm really, uh, happy with, with what the staff and, and the Public Works Director has done. I can't say enough about that, it's really, really great. Uh, I hope I've explained that pretty correct. Let me see, I've got time to probably go through that a little bit better, but it cost us, we paid two-and-a-half percent interest on the revolving fund loan. It cost the city four-point-five million dollars for that interest rate, for that twenty-year loan. If we'd have had the bond for it, by the time we paid for the, the interest rate and the, the float to bond both, it would have been ten-point-eight million. That difference is six-point-three million in savings. And, and I just can't say enough about that. Even if I can question it if they want, I think, uh, Inez would back me up on those figures. Um, but there is cities, the reason why I bring this out, there is cities, uh, and matter of fact, the, uh, the, uh, two of the engineering firms that was integrated when, when, when I was at the integrating process, two of them, two of those firms, um, actually made reference to a conventional loan being acceptable for this loan. It's almost like if, if they had this conventional loan and they'd have got to bid, they wouldn't have had that pile of paperwork to go through, so it'd have been less work. So, they were actually, uh, and it had me worried, I was afraid we wouldn't get this loan for that reason. And, uh, I'm really glad that this came true. Again, we saved six-point-three million dollars. I can't stress that enough. We need to give credit to Craig and the public, the Public Works Director and staff for this. When, when this upgrade is in operational online, I think the city should give, uh, the Public Works Director and staff a party. We've just saved six, six-point-three million dollars. And, uh, to me, that is, that is really great. I, I hope I've, uh, explained that well enough to where it's all understood, I'll repeat it, we saved six-point-three million dollars. We now have a loan at two-and-a-half percent, it's only going to cost us four-point-five million over twenty years. And, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Rick Walters?
My name is Rick, Rick Walters and I live in the City of Galt. I'm going to be talking about the water meter program. In nineteen ninety-two, new homeowners were required to pay for their own water meter and installation charges upfront as the condition of sale. It was assumed that shortly after moving in, our water meters would be up and running. As the years passed by, residents forgot about the meters because the price of water was right. As years went by, the cities, this city started to use the flat-rate system, in my opinion, as a revenue stream to fund general fund liabilities such as retirement, healthcare costs, and a doubling of the utility wages from two thousand to the present day. This city, according to the draft water meter plan, has collected a total of one-point-seven million dollars in revenue. I can only assume that this city has been sitting on this money and in my case, for eighteen years, collecting interest. The draft water meter implementation plan of July two thousand eight clearly states that Phase One water meters shall be installed by January two thousand ten for all post-nineteen ninety-two households. Conspiracy theories are born from misinformation or not enough information, or in this case, no information at all. According to some members of our community, the following theories and statements are considered possible. One, the delays suggest this city is using the money for other purposes. Two, the delays suggest an agenda by staff to create a need to do Phase One and Two at the same time so that it, so that they can revamp the whole system and charge higher rates. Three, this one-point-seven million dollars is not in a lockbox account. Four, the delays suggest that existing water meters and newly-installed water meter users, their rates will rise by three-hundred percent or more. Five, not meeting the mandate could result in fines paid by the taxpayer with higher utility rates. Six, this last theory suggests that the money is gone and the city is in a panic trying to come up with the money. The bottom line is this, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, are you listening?
Checking notes, yes.
Oh, okay. I, uh, the bottom line is this, I paid for my water meter and installation costs eighteen years ago. According to my records, this city owes me one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twelve dollars for overcharging of water rates for the past twelve years. How do I know this? I have a water meter installed in my soft-water system. According to this meter, I use one-thousand-forty gallons of household water a week, not three-thousand-five-hundred gallons suggested by the city's flat-rate fee. If you add the landscaping water and the amount of one-thousand gallons a week, that's a total usage of two-thousand-forty gallons per week times eight-point-five weeks. That amounts to seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty gallons for two months, not twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty that the city says. My cost for two months, according to the city's own utility rate structure, should be twenty-one dollars and eighty cents. Now, if you add the two-dollar-and-fifty cent twice for the meter operation and maintenance charge, that's another five dollars, so you add that up and it comes out to twenty-six dollars and eighty cents every two months, not forty-four dollars that you're charging me now. Retired couples and seniors will benefit from the water meters that the, of the, the retired couples and seniors will benefit from water meters if the policy of this city is one of fairness and honesty. If not, all citizens will suffer and some of us will lose our homes. We are tired of the system being manipulated and uncontrolled. Staff constantly reminds residents that they are overworked, understaffed, and underpaid. Well, welcome to the real world. So, I'm asking you as a council, put my water meter in like you said you were going to do January first. That's what I want. I've been waiting eighteen years. That's long enough. Thank you.
Thank you, you're right. Any other speakers?
Um, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, John Zwanziger?
He did a good job, just to-
That's not normal for me, actually. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, I'm John Zwanziger and I'm the manager of the local census office located in Elgro. Our address there is ninety-three fifty-five East Stockton Boulevard. It's just great to be before you, it's an honor not just to, uh, get a chance to speak with you, but I'm privileged to, to be the manager of that office because of the importance of the job we have to do, uh, during the remainder of this year and much of it's going to come upon us rather quickly. I'm, uh, also, uh, excited about, uh, the, the things I hear from, uh, Mr. Jim Hugel, who's a resident here, he's also one of our recruiting assistants, that, uh, uh, there's a, a real great interest in, in the census here in Galt. And, Elizabeth, I understand you're, uh, leading the complete count committee?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, thank you so much for that. And, uh, our emphasis at this time is to let everybody know that the census is coming, that the forms are going out, that our goal is to try to count everyone once on, uh, April first. And, we just need everyone's help in order to do that. And, first of all, it's important because it's mandated by the Constitution, Article One, Section Two. First census took place in seventeen ninety and has every ten years since then. And, it's, it's important because for us, uh, it is about the money many times, but it's also about representation and being properly represented, uh, through our elected officials. But, I, I heard money talked about a lot tonight and the, the figures are overwhelming. Every year, there's some four-hundred-billion-plus dollars that are given to communities based on population census counts. To make that a little more understandable, each person, uh, that equates to about thirteen-hundred dollars per individual that's counted. If you undercount ten people here in Galt, that's, last time I figured, about thirteen-thousand dollars. If it's a hundred people, you can just do the math and you can see how really important getting that complete count is. Uh, because it, it does have to do with money. It's important because, uh, we, at least for a limited period of time, can provide jobs to people in the local area. Uh, and again, we're, we're really fortunate that we have someone like Jim, uh, on our recruiting team. We also have, uh, Bob Belay here, who is a clerk in the office. Uh, before I came here, I actually went over to the high school because, uh, one of my office supervisors has a daughter that's involved in cheerleading, so I stopped over there. So, it's been, been fun, I've never had the privilege of spending much time in, in Galt and, uh, I'm going to change that at least during, during the census and our involvement. And, uh, it's also important because for each percentage of, uh, lack of response, it costs the census somewhere between eighty and ninety million dollars for us to put people on the streets, to go door-to-door, to, to get the information that, uh, that's really easy to get, if we can get people to respond. And, and that's, that's the second. But, the first point, it's very important. The second point is that it's easy. Uh, easy, it's, it's ten questions in ten minutes and all a person has to do is, is mail it back and it's done. And, uh, if we don't hear from, from people, uh, they're, in the middle of April, a second form can be sent out to them, uh, one of two things, they'll get a- a postcard thanking them, you know, for their response, or they'll get a second form. And it's those that we don't get. It's called the non-response follow-up that will then happen. But it is easy. And the third point is that it's safe, in that all the information is confidential. We take extreme measures to make sure that all the information is kept confidential, so people don't have to worry. They don't have to worry about information being given to law enforcement or that type of thing. They can rest assured that that doesn't happen. We take great measures to assure that confidentiality and security that all of our people are sworn to maintain that. If you come to our office, you probably wouldn't get beyond the first door because it's a secure office. There's one exception, and that is we're going to be sending all of you invitations to our open house, which will be the 25th of January, from 10 to 1 o'clock. And we'll have some speakers, some special presentations, have some food, probably some giveaways and those types of things. But again, it's a real privilege to stand before you this evening, let you know what we're doing, and thank you for your cooperation and your help. And Elizabeth, I do thank you, and hopefully I'll get to know you a little better in the future.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good time.
Any questions?
Thank you. I already have our email. I got one right there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. No other speakers?
No other speakers, but my timers are both.
Pardon me? Okay. Next item we have is information consent calendar. If I could ask City Clerk to read those off, please.
Yes, we have seven items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular council meetings at December 15, 2009. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, an addendum to the 800 megahertz radio upgrade project. Number four, cooperative agreement with Caltrans for the Twin Cities Road-Highway 99 interchange interim improvements. Number five, replacement parts for arsenic treatment improvements projects. Number six, appropriation of grant funds for the City Hall ADA Automated Door Project. And number seven, approval of the treasures report for the period ending November 2009.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? None. I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next item, scheduled matters.
Okay, number one, public hearing to consider joining the California First Property Assessed Clean Energy Program.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor members of council. The item for tonight is public hearing, and you have three items which staff has presented for action to allow the City of Galt to join the California First Program. This has been before you back in November. These are the final documents. Sandy Keriu has worked very diligently on this, had prepared this report, and I will have her give you a summary of what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. As a bit of background, Councilmember Meredith first brought the concept of a property assessed clean energy program to City Council over a year ago after the state law was amended to allow cities and counties and JPAs to offer these programs to private property owners on a voluntary basis. Around that time, some cities and counties like Palm Desert and Sonoma County established their own pace programs. However, these types of programs require significant staff time and money to develop the program, do all the marketing, conduct the loan reviews, and all the administrative duties. Therefore, it would have been difficult for a jurisdiction like Galt to develop and implement our own program. To solve that problem, and thanks in large part to a grant opportunity notice that was issued back in October by the California Energy Commission, a statewide pilot program has now been developed with 14 participating counties and potentially 132 cities in those counties, including Galt. Assuming a successful grant application, we will then be able to make this program available to our citizens with minimal city staff time or other costs to the city. Although I did give you a lot of information when we brought it back before you on November 17th, tonight is a noticed public hearing that's required before you can officially join the program. Consequently, there may be members of the public in attendance or listening via the website because of the notice in the paper, so with your permission, I'd like to just kind of briefly go over some of the program elements once again. As we indicated, the California First Program is instituted by the California Communities Joint Powers Authority. This JPA consists of all 58 California counties and over 400 cities, including Galt. The program will allow property owners in participating cities to finance renewable energy, energy efficiency, and ultimately water efficiency improvements on their property, and then pay the loans back as part of their property taxes. If a property owner chooses to participate, the improvements will be financed by the issuance of bonds by California communities. Assessments may be levied only with the free and willing consent of the property owner. They execute a contract with California communities. This is not an area-wide assessment. Various energy efficiency and renewable energy efficiency improvements are eligible for financing. I've included a draft list as attachment three to your report. It includes everything from duct sealing and insulation to high-efficiency air conditioners, water heaters, solar water heaters, and all the way up to solar photovoltaic systems. Water efficiency projects, the legislature just passed legislation in October, I believe, to add those. They will not be included in the six-month pilot, but the intent is to ultimately include those in the project. All residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, and nonprofit properties are eligible to participate if they meet general underwriting criteria that's very similar to most other loans. A couple of the main things are that a project cannot exceed a 10-to-1 lien to value. In other words, you can't finance more than 10% of the value of the property. Residential and small commercial projects are also capped at a $75,000 maximum loan. Another one, you can't exceed an 80% lien to value for private debt. So if you have a mortgage on the property or a line of credit, we can't exceed 80% with the additional loan for the energy efficiency. Lastly, projects may be financed up to 20 years, but they can't exceed the useful life of the improvement. So it could be as short as five years, depending on what type of energy efficiency improvements are done. There will be a reasonable application fee for participation in the program. They're anticipating that's going to be probably less than $300. Interest rate will be based on a pooled approach, and there'll be sort of a not-to-exceed amount in the early stages. Right now, it's still a little bit up the air because we don't know what the bond market's going to be. The grant application does include at least a 1% interest rate buydown, so we're probably looking in the 6% to 10% range for the pilot program. The benefits to the property owner are that it's completely voluntary. Only property owners who choose to participate will have assessments imposed on their property. The interest on the loan is tax deductible, just like mortgage interest would be. Obviously, it will lower your monthly energy bills. In today's economic environment, there may not be attractive other private enterprise opportunities to finance them in this way. While most private loans are due on sale of the benefited property, which makes it difficult to match the life of the repayment obligation with the life of the improvement, under the California First Program, the assessment obligation will transfer with the property upon sale, which is a really nice feature of the program. So you don't have to worry that you're not going to stay in your home long enough to recoup the value of that. It will actually transfer with the property. The benefits to the city, we are not obligated in any way to repay the bonds issued by California communities or to pay the assessments levied on the participating properties. California communities handles all assessment administration, bond issuance, and bond administration functions. We can also meet our environmental goals. This program advances six or seven of the new general plan goals related to meeting our greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. The proposed resolution that's attached to the staff report will officially let Galt join the program, and it authorizes California communities to accept applications from owners of property within our jurisdiction and to levy assessments against those properties upon application. The state energy program grant application for this program was submitted to the California Energy Commission on December 21st. We will know whether the grant is awarded by February 11th. If we are successful, the legal validation process will start in March, run through July, and the pilot will be up and running probably in early June. The grant funding will officially expire March 31 of 2012, but the intent of the program is to reach the point where it is self-sustaining, that application fees or a portion of the financing costs will then continue the program. Each county and at least one city in that county must pass the resolutions to join California First by January 18th. So that's why we're here tonight, because our next meeting is the 19th, one day late. Most jurisdictions in fact county are going on January 12th or 13th. Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova did go in early December, so they're already done. We're kind of in the middle, and then everybody else will follow us. As far as financial impact to the city, there will be a sort of a soft cost. During the six-month pilot, they're estimating that it will take about a quarter of a full-time equivalent staff person, that will be me, to coordinate monthly or weekly meetings to kind of work some of the bugs out. The resolution that's before you also authorizes payment of the setup fee for the city, if necessary, to cover legal procedural and technology costs. In November, I indicated that we are going to include, or it has been included in the grant application, that they will pay for all of the cities and counties' setup fees. For Galt, that amount is $12,500. However, there is a possibility that the CEC will not fund that portion of the grant application, or even if they do, that there's a time delay between when we get the grant monies. So the program administrator is asking the jurisdictions go ahead and pay the setup fee if they can, and that way they can proceed with the legal validation proceedings. Otherwise, it would delay the launch of the pilot. We'd have to wait until the grant funds came forward. Assuming the grant is approved and those setup fees are included, we would then be refunded those setup fees. The resolution, like I said, is structured to go ahead and authorize payment of the fees. If you choose one of the other alternatives in the staff report, then we will just simply restructure that resolution. There are no other costs or financial risks to the city for participating in the program. In addition, we can withdraw at any time by passing a resolution that rescinds that authorization. Hopefully, I can answer any questions you might have, and then you will need to open a public hearing on this project.
Are there any questions, or you want to open first?
I did want to ask one on the presentation. Could you repeat what you were anticipating the fee to be, not to the state, but to the homeowner, less than $300?
The application, they're hoping to keep it under $300.
Okay. No other questions? We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak at this time?
John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback. Well, my concern may have allayed somewhat. I've heard a few questions, I mean, answers here, but let me give you a little example of some of my concerns, and maybe some of my answers. I could ask some questions, maybe they can be answered. This program reminded me, before I heard some of the comments, it reminded me of another program that caused a housing bubble collapse. No responsibility, I thought, on the homeowner, and we have homeowners out there that could go into default and foreclosure yet, because I had one just across the street from me going into foreclosure. And this kind of a program sounds like a program that some of those kind of people may get involved with, especially if there's nothing upfront to them. And it could just push them over the edge into foreclosures, what I was afraid of. Maybe if there's some requirements that would eliminate that, maybe that wouldn't be a concern. I heard at first it's $300, now I heard it was trying to keep it under 300. If there isn't any requirements there for anybody to apply for this loan, I think it's risky to put something out like this and not have anybody supervise it. Some of these homeowners may be ready to go into default, and they may, if they don't have any responsibility, they may sign for something like this, and then go into default. And then the banks got to try to move a home that they're already losing money on, plus they got another $20,000 or $30,000 to lose, I mean, that they got to put up with. So that's my question on this project. And what requirements are the homeowners to have? Did you say they don't have to pay $300 upfront, or do they?
That's the setup fee for the homeowner. The application fee is about, going to be around $300. The eligibility requirements are a property title screen where they get title report information on your property title, lender notification, so they have to have consent from your lender, property-based debt, so property tax payment history, existing liens, default, foreclosure, or bankruptcy, it's all checked. Can't exceed the 10-to-1 lien value, which Sandy touched on. That's 10% of the property value. 80% lien to value for private debt, so mortgage or line of credit. That's the eligibility.
Okay, that sounds good. I didn't know all of that. That sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I have no other speakers.
No other members from the audience wanting to speak? We'll close the open session. Any other further comments or questions from council? If not, I'll ask for a motion. Who to approve?
Second.
Who to approve then, second? No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy and Kirk, for all of your hard work. Good job.
Regular calendar, city council?
Under city council, we have congressional funding requests for 2010, an update report. This was requested by Councilmember Clark.
Do you want me to start it off? I know you've had some conversations and our coordination of my meetings and all, so I really turn it over to you. My reason for asking it to be on the agenda, it's that time of year that we do each year to begin planning for this, and the congressional requests, forums, and all will be in place. And I've spoken with Pete Eviich.
Yeah, it is that time of the year where we typically put our congressional appropriation requests together. We had a conference call with staff and Pete Eviich a couple weeks ago, and we've been trying to arrange a time where we can get together with Lundgren's staff in particular, and we have a meeting scheduled for January 26 at 10:00 a.m., and the mayor is going to be attending with us. We will, one, first of all, thank them for, thank Lundgren and the staff for their support of last year's appropriation request. And the council recall, we got, it was a good year for us. We received half million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant and another half million dollars for the Central Galt interchange project. So it was really, really a spectacular year as far as federal funding for Galt's projects. And so we've been talking about what we want to present this year, and while we do have, you know, some projects that are still on the books and things that we want to get accomplished, the main focus of it is to, you know, thank them, bring them up to speed on some of their projects, continue to indicate the need for funding for Central Galt Interchange as well as Twin Cities Interchange and the other project that we've identified in the past, which is the regional gun facility, gun range that could be used for potential, you know, regional law enforcement training and so forth. But this may not be, and with Pete's suggestions, may not be a year that we push real hard for some of those things, because, one, we're already far along in the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, and the timing on that is probably not critical to get the funding for that. And then on the Central Galt Interchange, the same kind of thing, we're getting ready to go to bid, and maybe somebody else's time to get in line. But we do have some other funding requests that have been made that are still working their way through, in particular the transportation dollars that are making their way through Congress as we speak. Hopefully, by the end of next year, they will be through, and we'll get some money. We have some requests in there right now for both Central Galt as well as the Twin Cities Interchange project. So those are continuing to move along, and we're going to continue to push Lundgren's staff to make sure they understand the importance of those projects for the City of Galt. And the official appropriation requests are typically due in mid-February. We just got several of them from both Lundgren's office as well as Feinstein and Boxer, so we, as staff, will be working on. we, as staff, will be working on putting those together and submitting those to the various offices. But, so that's kind of the update and the plan, and we'll make sure council gets, keeps apprised of the various submittals that we actually made. But again, I think the initial meeting with Lundgren's staff is more one of, thank you very much, it was a great year, we appreciate all your support, and, you know, we're continuing to push forward and move some of those projects, and give them updates on the status of some of those as well. So, good news all around.
And to kind of comment what Jason was saying, and I'd mentioned before, this might be one of the better years, especially after we meet with staff and get a feel of kind of what the lay of the land is, to maybe take a path, because sometimes they appreciate if you're not there asking for something every single year, and we've been getting something now for the last few years. And sometimes also, in working with other cities in the congressional district, if we take a path, so to speak, this year, so that there's more funding for some projects they're doing, sometimes they'll cooperate also, and then take a path in the future year when we have a more critical need. So I would suggest that we have the meeting. I'll be in Washington, D.C., and if it works out with the staff in Washington, D.C., I'll be in their office and tie in to the meeting going on out here, and just kind of get a feel for what they think the best way to go is, and Pete's suggestion. But I would suggest that we have a wish list prepared, if we get the word that this might be also still a good year, depending on what we put in. And I again want to thank the congressman and his staff for all they've done for us, but also for their candor during the process. They don't waste our time with telling us, yes, send us 20 things, and we'll put them all in for you, because that's just not going to happen. And so, in the public works area in particular, I know Greg appreciates only focusing on those two or three that we think really have a shot, give them our best shot, and in this case, those have paid off, so. Fun, well spent.
And Lundgren, Lundgren in particular, has very strict requirements on what he will consider and present to move forward, and it has to be a very strict federal nexus. There has to be some connection to federal purpose or a federal need, and that's why we've moved things forward, like the wastewater treatment plant, which is because of the federal water quality standards requiring us to make these upgrades, so there's a clear federal nexus there. So we can't, you know, we can't just identify any project that he won't support. So we need to be very careful in things that we put forward, because he will, he's very sensitive of the things that he will advocate for. And so, certainly, there's a very limited number of projects that qualify or could be supported by Lundgren and the staff. That's it?
Okay. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Okay, Community Development Department, Sphere of Influence, supplemental environmental impact report preparation, and budget appropriation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. As you recall, in April this year, we completed the general plan update. Following that, staff was instructed to make application for a sphere of influence amendment to the city's existing sphere. As part of that, staff prepared internally the master services review, submitted that to LAFCO in July of '09. We received comments back from them at the end of October. We responded first week in November with those comments. And at the same time, LAFCO had indicated during this process that the city's general plan EIR would be sufficient for utilization in the SEQA analysis necessary for the SOI amendment. We had meetings to discuss this process early on. We settled on a process. That process was initiated. Environmental documents, draft environmental documents were prepared, which were received in December. At the same time, LAFCO's legal counsel reviewed the draft documents and determined that they were inappropriate for the purposes of the SOI amendment. Her analysis led her to determine that the requirements for an SOI amendment are different statutorily from those which are evaluated in the city's general plan EIR, and that in fact additionally, there would be required, there would be additional analysis required in several different areas as it relates to an SOI. Those talked about habitat preservation, open space, ag land preservation, and probably most importantly, a little more analysis in the area of the extension of public services to the area to be added to the city's sphere of influence. When staff was made aware of that, the city manager, city attorney, myself, met with the executive director, assistant executive director, as well as their legal counsel and the consultant preparing this to see if there were alternatives available short of the recommended supplemental EIR route, which had been proposed by their legal counsel. As a result of that, unfortunately, their legal counsel believes that that is the most expeditious and appropriate manner to proceed at this point. That process does rely on the city of Galt's general plan EIR to a degree, but then there would be additional analysis in those specified areas, and have been identified in the proposal, which is attached in your staff report, and I repeated those, I mentioned those earlier. Staff was disappointed. When we started this process, we thought we had the process laid out, and we knew what the environmental documents were going to be and what the requirements were. Unfortunately, the city of Galt is not the lead agency on this. They make all determinations as it relates to environmental documents prepared for the SOI. Therefore, we have very few choices. As indicated in the report and the attachments, there would be an additional cost of approximately $59,000, and the completion schedule would be approximately 23 weeks. In talking with LAFCO staff, the work prepared to date will not be for naught. It will be incorporated and utilized in the environmental document to be prepared. So we really haven't lost anything in terms of revenue. There will be just simply additional analysis to be incorporated in this process. That completes my report, unless there are any questions by council?
Kurt?
Yes?
How did we get this far, only to find out now that we have to go back? I pulled up the environmental review, or EIR, for the general plan, and chapter eight, it looked like we had addressed those. And in your report, you also concluded, or they said that this is a normal procedure, this is what they've done with other jurisdictions. So it's, I don't understand how they could let us get this far down the path and then decide that we have to start over with a delay and extra cost. Did our consultant, we have a consultant put that together, did they not?
We did not. They had their own consultant put this together.
But when we did our EIR?
Correct.
Whose consultant did that?
That was ESA. It was a subconsultant to Metier and Associates. That contract was for the city of Galt's general plan EIR. Again, the concern that has been raised by LAFCO's legal counsel is that there is a difference between a general plan EIR and an EIR prepared for a sphere of influence. These are very technical issues, and in her mind, and her position is, she does not believe that our EIR, or any general plan EIR, I believe, would meet that same test. I was very shocked, and quite frankly, upset, because we had gone through this process, and it had been laid out months before. I had assumed at the time we got the draft document that it would be going for public release. That is the time that, when their city, or when their legal counsel reviewed it, she is the one that determined it cannot proceed that in that fashion, and that we have to go the supplemental EIR route.
I think we've been in contact with LAFCO pretty frequently as we've moved forward to this, haven't we?
I have called and checked every milestone, and we had met every milestone according to the schedule, up until that point, yes.
The other thing practically, I went and actually looked at the land north of Twin Cities, and the biggest percentage of it is retail, or some kind of business, or ranchettes. It just doesn't seem realistic that we should have to go back through this, if you actually look at the area that we're talking about.
We discussed those very issues with the LAFCO staff and their legal counsel, and she was unswayed.
Well, and again, this is just, I don't mean to say just, this is their staff's recommendation to us. It's not the board, LAFCO's board. I'm not ready to move forward with this.
Go ahead.
To say I'm upset would be a understatement, and I'm sure you, and I hope everybody in the city is. First, I'd like to put a name to the she we're referencing, who's the staff person who's made this judgment?
I don't recall.
Well, yeah, the attorney's name is Nancy Miller, but as with all legal counsel, she's an advisor to the executive director, and this was her advice to the executive director who supports this, who makes the decision, and is carrying forward her recommendation.
Okay. I'd like to make a recommendation, at least for consideration, that we don't just accept this, and I am not prepared to approve another $59,000 just because someone on their staff wants to do some more study. I want an explanation from those people's boss, how they let their staff and us get this far in the process and dream up another $59,000 of work for us. I don't accept it. And I'd also like to have the opportunity to talk to some LAFCO members one-on-one, A, see if they even know about this, because I don't think this went for board approval. And for $59,000, I'd sure take a shot at going before the board before we just spend another $59,000 in 23 more weeks in delays. I don't get it, and I think someone along the process, and in this case, I'm not implying in our staff, but someone needs to be held accountable. If this is justified, that's one thing. It is not justified in the 24th hour of, how many years we've been doing this? I've been on the council seven, I guess. We've been doing it the whole time I'm here. This is ridiculous. And at least maybe we can prevent some other city from ending up in this position if we speak up, even if we end up having to be sort of the ones who takes the tough lesson of it. And then I look at some of the language in this proposal under task two, page two, from Planning Partners. One thing it says, this will also include all statutory sections required by SEQA. So has someone determined that we have failed to meet SEQA, because we and everybody else certainly know SEQA's a part of what we have to do? I don't believe that's even a fair statement, unless anyone here knows of some SEQA thing that we've already determined we've fallen short of. I think many of us know what some of this is about, and it's not SEQA. There's also a comment here, under the tasks, I moved positions, but one of it requires demonstration that we are meeting SECOG blueprint, and certainly as the vice chair of SECOG, I support the blueprint. But I'm not clear that there's any legal founding for LAFCO or anyone else to acquire such a finding, or for us to pay for such a finding. There's also a requirement in there for the inventory on greenhouse gases.
Right.
State of California hasn't even figured out all the guidelines for some of these things. So I think someone's greatly, or at least fairly, overreaching. I'm sure she could come here and put me in my place and tell me why I'm wrong. She's an attorney, and I'm not. But I also might want to ask that she does come stand right there and explain, if we're going to do this, what will satisfy you, so in 23 weeks, you don't think of some more items to recommend to your staff? I mean, and I'd like Mr. Brundage standing there with her and saying, this, and this, and this, and this, and when you meet all of those, you're done. Mr. Brundage has been here before. I'd like to have him come back, if that's what it's going to take, because, well, I'm going to stop, because I'm getting even more upset. But this is, my face has got to be red by now, but this is totally ridiculous. And quite frankly, it, I just don't accept that a staff recommendation so easily gets passed us for another $60,000.
Kurt, I have a question. What is the relationship between Planning Partners and LAFCO? Because you mentioned in the staff report that it's considered a subconsultant. Can you explain how they were awarded that contract?
They, there is a working relationship with Planning Partners. They do a certain, and they may have other consultants. This is one where they gave them a proposal, a scope of work, and Planning Partners came back with a scope of work and a price, and they were selected. It's similar to the process that we utilize here, where we have certain consultants that work for the city, and you can expedite the timeframe by not having to go through a formal RFP process, which can add anywhere from six to eight weeks to a project. Here, by using one of their consultants and not going out for competitive bid, and it is also an additional cost, because they charge you staff time for all of that process. So it is a subconsultant working for LAFCO.
I don't, I don't like this relationship at all. I don't like the fact that LAFCO can just come to the city of Galt and tell us, we've got a company that we do work with, they're going to charge you $59,000 to do this supplemental EIR, and you're going to grin and bear it. We've got no control over the company that's being selected, we're just getting handed a bill from LAFCO.
We have an option, and, but it would have, at the onset of this process, probably delayed it by, I would say, six to eight weeks at least, and probably cost five to $8,000 more.
Going through a couple of the items listed under his scope of work that he's proposing, the introductory section, how is this going to be any different than the introduction that we've already got in our EIR? Explaining SEQA requirements and...
This would be a separate standalone EIR. It would be what they call a supplemental EIR, which would, when taken together with the information in the city of Galt's general plan and the analysis in this general plan, constitutes a separate EIR. The process that they were using before was to simply rely on our general plan, circulate that with, like, very similar to an initial study checklist, and then use that as the process for approval.
What's the last jurisdiction that we know, in LAFCO's jurisdiction, that has applied for annexation and has gone through the same procedure? I know the city of Elk Grove's working on their own right now, but...
It would be an SOI amendment, is what I believe you're really speaking of, not an annexation, because this doesn't address that. I believe there were two, the city of Folsom and North Natomas. They mentioned those two probably as the most recent.
Have we made contact with their planning departments to see if they had to go through this additional procedure?
I have not contacted them. I don't disbelieve LAFCO in their statement that that was, this is the process that they made them go through.
Do we know if the city of Elk Grove has been made aware of the same requirement? Has their...
They don't have a general plan EIR to rely on. The difference with the city of Galt, I think, was that we had just adopted our general plan, and EIR, and LAFCO staff at the time felt that that would be sufficient.
In some cases, LAFCO could require a complete EIR if you didn't have a recent general plan EIR, because what they're proposing is a supplement to the general plan EIR. If there wasn't something like that, then you might have to do an entirely new EIR, which may have been done at Folsom and North Natomas, I don't know.
In the world of EIRs, and I know $59,000 is a lot of money, but in the world of EIRs, $59,000 is not a lot of money.
Today, that's a lot of money.
And I don't disagree, but I'm just, I'm trying to give you a comparison as to what EIRs cost.
How much did the general plan EIR cost?
I don't...
Rough?
Rough, uh...
$100,000?
It was probably closer to $150,000, but I would want to check that.
Well, what, I'm sorry, are you done, Andrew?
Well, the problem with this whole situation, we're trying to move forward, do the SOI, expand our SOI, create a better future for the city of Galt, but I think if we weren't so far into the process right now, we probably would have delayed it, just based on the fact that our budget in the city of Galt is struggling right now. And every municipality in Sacramento County is struggling right now. So for LAFCO to just come at the last second and create a $59,000 bill for us, to just accept, is just absolutely ludicrous. I agree with Darrell. I say that tonight, we don't take any action to approve this funding. I think we go back to LAFCO, get an absolute explanation on why we were given different information initially, why we're being asked to fund almost $60,000 to a consultant that we had absolutely no control over choosing.
The other thing I was going to say, towards the end of their, well, the letter was actually addressed to LAFCO, but on their, the funds they're requesting, and the tasks they're going to perform, and the deliverables, one of the final statements says, based on our understanding of the project and our project approach, the project is what the project is, and their approach is their approach. approach is their approach, and it's being laid out by LAFCO, but they're leaving this big opening to, in my opinion, add more dollars. It says, "Planning Partners has assumed up to 24 hours of technical effort to prepare the administrative final EIR/responses to comments. Should additional time be required based on the number of comments received, their complexity, and/or the need for additional environmental analysis," that's the whole reason they're making us do this, they're trying to drive environmental analysis. When you open that up, you're going to get comments. Anyway, if that occurs, which I'd be willing to predict will occur, "Such work is outside the current scope of work and would be completed for an additional fee on a time and materials basis at our standard billing rate." So as Andrew's hinted, it's a great way to create work, make you reopen...
And earn money.
You have to ask for comments, and if you get more comments, then they can bill us more money to address them, especially if they're complex and environmental in nature. The whole document's environmental in nature, that's why we're doing it.
Don't get me wrong, I'm comfortable with evaluating environmental mitigation measures that need to be taken, but we've already done that. The EIR that we've presented just in the last 18 months satisfied what I believe the environmental community was looking for in our analysis. So to think that we have to do a supplemental EIR to address more concerns is just insane.
Well, and I think everyone on this council and in the community who's followed the general plan knows much of how these things are addressed are compromise and mitigation so that you don't have impact. And this council certainly has made considerable compromises already to address the concerns of environmental by pulling back in the land we are interested in and a lot of things we are interested in. And I'll just be very candid, if we want to spend 23 more weeks thinking about this, I'll think about my position on some of those compromises. I mean, if we're going to give up another 23 weeks, for what? For paying another $60,000? You know, when do you compromise enough and when do you give back enough to try and move a process along? So I think Galt's been given a rotten deal in this, and we have a community that needs to create some jobs, get some retail and commercial going on the 99 corridor. We've been working for, as I say, I've been starting down there and up here 12 years on this process, seven years officially. This is just, I think, ridiculous, and this county, this city, this country need some jobs.
We have the highest unemployment rate in the county of Sacramento. We're almost twice the national average right now. This is dramatically important for the city of Galt to finish this as quickly as possible. We've got so many development projects that could come online once this is finished.
So anyway, like I say, I would like the council to consider that we have whatever suitable contacts are there to be had. I just, I think this is too critical to just accept tonight. If we have to do it, I want to at least fight for it before we have to do it. I'm not saying that it's not worth it in the long run, but not without a fight.
Yeah, Darrell, I agree with you. I mean, and my, you guys covered everything plus a lot more than my questions were, so I can tell we're all upset. My concern is, and as I think, Darrell, you said, is there anything else? You know, you wait till the 11th hour and tell us that we have to do whatever. So I think what council, I think what we're saying is request to make arrangements for somebody from LAFCO. You've mentioned a couple of names, you know some of those individuals, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just have you comment and talk a little bit about what some of the options are that we have. And as staff, we certainly have the same reaction that the council is expressing this evening, and that's why we initially had the meeting with staff. A little bit as it relates to the process, when we filed the application, the staff does go through a determination as to whether or not the environmental document that we prepared was appropriate for this new project, which is our sphere of influence application. It's a very technical analysis under CEQA. And the consultant that is being utilized initially provided a draft report making a determination that the environmental document was, in fact, appropriate and adequate for the application. And after further review by LAFCO staff, including their legal counsel, that draft determination was revised, and they issued the letter which said that they felt that a supplement, that it was not adequate, and that a supplemental document was required, which is one of the options under CEQA. One option is to do a completely new environmental document. Another one is to do the supplement. There's another type of document called an addendum. Point is, is they're fairly technical determinations, and while we don't, even at this point, we do not agree with that determination, it is, in fact, within their, the staff's discretion to make that determination. One of the things that we explored was whether or not, under the LAFCO rules of procedure, whether or not there was a mechanism for us to formally appeal that staff determination, that determination by the executive director to the board at this point in time. And their rules are completely silent as to that mechanism. So I think that the options that are available to the council at this point in time are, certainly you can always withdraw your application and just say, when it's not going forward at this point in time, we're not going to spend the money. And if ultimately our decision is not to pay the money, that isn't, in effect, really what your decision is, de facto, to withdraw the application. The other option is, as you discussed tonight, to try to address this on a political level. And I think that if that's the desire of the council, that type of mechanism would be more appropriate in a council or in a conference room than in a hearing environment where, you know, Mr. Brundage and their attorney come before you, give you their determination, and we have a back and forth. I think that there's going to have to be a lot of dialogue. I think that at least one or more of their elected officials are going to have to have the opportunity to fully understand some very technical issues and provide advice. So I think that that, if you're going to pursue this politically, my recommendation would be that we endeavor to set up a meeting with one or two of their elected representatives, the executive director, council, and at least start the process in that forum as opposed to demanding their presence before this body and having that type of discussion.
And that is my intention, and I probably ran the two together, but my first request and recommendation, if council was interested, is that we do that step first. Should that step fail and we decide to go forward and fund this, I would then like, whoever the appropriate people are, the legal counsel and the executive director at a minimum, although I'm sure we can't cause legal counsel to appear, but we can request it, I'd like them to stand right there, looking into that camera, and go right down the laundry list so every person in this room and in this city hears from their mouth, is this the final, or do they think they're within 10%? But I want them to tell all of us in this community where we stand if we move into this next phase with another $59,000 in another 23 weeks. And I think they owe it to every one of us to do that, if that's what we end up doing. But I first would like to be in front of a couple of the board members, A, to get a feel of how where they are of the situation, and B, how supportive they are of the staff recommendation. I'm not looking to get into a fight with LAFCO or their board, but I'd like to get a sense of, I mean, our staff brings us things all the time. Stop signs is the best recommendation. I don't believe staff's ever recommended we put in a stop sign, and we've approved everyone that's probably come before us. So it happens all the time. So I'd like to get a feel of how strong does the board support? And I definitely would take issue with some of the lists as having any legal requirement whatsoever. I'm sure it's some, now I'm going to get politically incorrect, but I think it's somebody's personal view of what the world should look like and how to get there, and they've put it on here because they'd like to see it. And I'd like to challenge the legal requirement to be here.
Okay.
Anyway, I think you get where I'm coming from.
Is there a subcommittee that the council wanted to appoint?
That's what I was going to ask for, subcommittee. So obviously, I think we have one council member that's going to volunteer.
I'd like to be on that subcommittee.
Any other council member?
I'll be on it, too.
Sure.
All right. We'll make it arrangements and coordinate with everybody's schedules and we'll get back with you.
Great.
Okay.
And again, to our staff, thank you.
Thank you.
You're just the messenger.
That's right. I think they took it that way. Next item.
Public Works Department, award of synthetic turf purchase for Walker Community Park, Phase One.
Good evening, Mayor Shelton and council members. I'm Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with Public Works, and I am the project manager overseeing the construction of Walker Community Park Phase 1A on behalf of the city's Parks Department. Staff recommendation before you tonight is the following, that you select Field Turf USA as the provider for the synthetic turf for Walker Community Park. Adopt the resolution authorizing the director of Public Works to purchase the synthetic turf, insulation services, and permanent items for $571,204, and improve an appropriation amount of $200,000 from Fund 11 Parks. On September 22, 2009, the council authorized the city manager to execute a contract to construct Walker Park. Staff mentioned at that time that the synthetic turf, as well as the playground equipment, would be separate from the construction award and would be brought back before you for consideration. The award did not include purchase or installation of synthetic turf because staff elected to provide the synthetic turf separately by using the California Multiple Award Schedules, also known as CMAS. Doing so will allow the city to optimize being able to select a synthetic turf product that's matching the needs of the city, also taking advantage of pricing that is about 5% below market rate, and that pricing that has also been determined to be fair and competitive, and also eliminate your typical contractor markup of about 12% to 15%, which equates to about $50,000 to $70,000 per field installation. The construction contract did include the preparation of the synthetic turf field foundation base and its associated drainage. The base foundation is the critical key to a successful field installation. It is critical to get the base installed properly the first time. To that end, that's why the specifications for the construction contract required the contractor to have a minimum experience installing synthetic turf bases. Staff took a little bit of heat from the bidding contractors, but stuck with that requirement to help ensure a quality installation for the city. The specifications are also very detailed, with over five pages regarding the base foundation preparation alone. In addition, the specs, the turf installer, in this case, the recommender is Field Turf, has several checks and double checks in the base preparation process with the contractor. And that is why the city would like the turf installer to be on board early so that they can partner, if you will, with the contractor installing the base for the installation of the field. There is a standard one-year warranty on the base foundation. The city could have asked for an extended warranty, but the contractor would have translated, if you will, that uncertainty into their bid with a higher price. So we stuck with the standard warranty. Field turf, they have an eight-year insured warranty on their turf product. That insured warranty is backed with the highest financial rating and reserves of any turf supplier. And the reason why that's important, if the company goes bankrupt, which was a problem with a variety of turf vendors about 10 years ago, the warranty is covered independently, if you will. It's not dependent on being satisfied by the company. If there is a problem during the construction, we could require the contractor providing a standard warranty, but the upfront focus is on the base foundation before the turf is installed. Staff met with four CMAS synthetic turf vendors, Sprint Turf, Mondo, California Ultimate Turf, who markets what's called Tiger Turf and Field Turf. Each of those presented the benefits of their respective products to city staff. Staff also met with, or we also, either by phone interview or email interview, local agencies that had recently installed synthetic turf fields in their jurisdictions. In addition, staff physically looked at synthetic turf fields for the Consume This Community Services District under construction, the Elk Grove Unified School District, particularly the Consume This Oak High School Field. And then I went and looked at the city of Sacramento and their Granite Regional Park. They have a synthetic turf soccer field. Field turf was selected by staff based on the following criteria: their comparative cost and value, their quality, their customer service before and after installation, determined by interviewing these jurisdictions, local installation experience due to the number of fields that they've installed in the nearby region, their insulation and maintenance personnel are company-owned, not, if you will, independent contractors, and they are based locally in the Grass Valley area. Their warranty, as mentioned, and what's being offered, their particular turf product has a higher resistance to heat and microbial growth, if you will. In 2008 and 2009, Field Turf installed over 40 fields in northern California. Staff report mentions three local, West Sacramento High School, Endurcombe High School, and they're in the process of installing over half a million square feet in the Consume This CSD's Bartholomew Sports Park in the East Franklin area. If you search the internet, you can find the following negative concerns about synthetic turf: temperatures, lead content, air quality, staff. And I'm going to, if you will, kind of address, the predominant concern in the Central Valley is temperatures, and that synthetic turf can get about 20 to 40 degrees warmer. And so in to, if you will, address that concern, Field Turf has offered to the city their latest product, which is made of a polymer, the turf itself, which is, has greater heat resistance, and there's also an initial test to be shown to be more durable and softer. In addition, the city is going to go with a green rubber infill. This is what the turf looks like without the rubber infill, and then this is what it looks like, and in between the blades is an equal mixture of cryogenic rubber and sand. And that's, it's the sand and the rubber that provides the, if you will, the softness and the tread, as opposed to, if you will, the old AstroTurf, which just had a carpet, essentially a carpet pad underneath. essentially a carpet pad underneath. In addition, and I can't see it, but the rubber is black in this particular case, so the idea of going with the green rubber infill is that there's less heat buildup, while studies have shown that the majority of the heat buildup actually occurs in the turf blade because there's just so much more of it, and that's the point of going with the special polymer proposal. In addition, the plans are installing what we call, affectionately, water cannons that will be able to hose down the field for two purposes: one, to cool it down, and then to, if you will, rinse it off after an event. There's some positive and negative about hosing down. One is an increase in humidity, and like I said, that can be good or bad depending on the situation. So, that's why the staff's focus has been getting the most heat-resistant product, if you will, available. Lead content, that's actually an old concern based on the AstroTurf, you know, from, I won't say from my youth, but, which was made out of nylon. FieldTurf is made out of polyethylene, and according to FieldTurf's website, their product is 100% lead-free. Air quality concerns, there've been, air quality concerns made about emissions from the turf, breathing the rubber, breathing the sand, and numerous studies have been done, EPA, local jurisdictions, that have shown that the air quality constituents of concern are actually low or lower than the, if you will, the surrounding environment. Terms of staff infections, again, numerous studies have been done that show that turf doesn't really harbor the bacteria, its presence is low to none. In addition, the EcoGreen Rubber Infill incorporates Microban, which is an antimicrobial additive, so with that will assist in keeping that issue to a non-issue, if you will. Positives with installing synthetic turf, particularly over a natural turf field, you have about, projected about $50,000 a year in savings with a synthetic life, your synthetic turf field lasts anywhere from eight to 10 years, and there actually are FieldTurf fields out there that are even beyond the 10-year range. Over 1 million gallons of water would be saved by not watering, as opposed to a natural turf field. Thousands of pounds of fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides won't be applied, and that has a benefit to stormwater quality. The infill rubber is 100% recycled material and diverts over 20,000 tires per field from being dumped in landfills. And recyclability, 100% of the field is recyclable at the end of its service life, and this is actually a coaster, FieldTurf gave the city, that's made from a recycled field. And lastly, a synthetic turf field can be used about three times more than a natural turf field, mostly in that the city can now schedule events during the winter. The turf fields, basically at November, they pretty much try to shut them down. And then, you get, or you can also hold events shortly after a rain, and you don't have to worry about, oh, my goodness, the field's gonna get fresh with it being saturated. On December 9th, 2009, boys brought before the Parks and Rec Committee staff's recommendation to select FieldTurf, and they concurred with that recommendation. There are, you do have some alternatives, which was in the new format of the staff report. You could select a lower turf product from FieldTurf, but I think we iterated the benefits of going with the staff's recommendation. Or you can negotiate with another CMAS turf vendor, but they're probably projected to maybe save around 10%. Or you can install a natural turf field, but again, hopefully, between staff's presentation and the content of staff report, that we've given enough sufficient reasons for your concurrence with staff's recommendation. On September 22nd, the staff report had a budget item, so to speak, for the synthetic turf. That was about $4.15 a square foot, and that was based on picking up probable costs from STANTEC, and looking at the proposal from FieldTurf, as well as other CMAS vendors, that number just isn't close to being correct. If you will, more standard cost would be about $5.50 a square foot. This particular, all total, tax, whatnot, full boat, if you will, equates to about a cost of $5.95 a square foot. The proposal from FieldTurf did exceed the estimated budget of $400,000 by about 42%, but it's still within the overall budget for the park. Staff did anticipate that portion of the contingency, which is also, was contained in the September 22nd budget, would be utilized, but we feel that the superior quality and the items, as indicated, recommend. That goes to the request for the $200,000 appropriation. If staff, if council approves staff's recommendation, that would leave about $34,000 estimated in the contingency, which we're in the starting, the site was, is in the process of being graded and has suffered some rain delays with the rain that we've had. But staff believes that the remaining contingency may not be adequate at this early stage, and so we're requesting to restore the contingency back to a suitable level, that we request this appropriation from Fund 11. It may not be needed, like I said, we're early in the process, but staff recommends this proactive step. According to latest revenue estimates, Fund 11 is projected to have available funds to cover this appropriation request. If council concurs with staff's recommendation, the city will get a synthetic turf product that is heat and microbial resistant, durable, and softer. In addition, FieldTurf is offering a special price consideration to the city, and they're offering this heat-resistant product at the same price as, if you will, the regular product, which equates to about a $28,000 savings projected. If you have any questions, staff is here to help. In addition, David Brown from FieldTurf is here in the audience, and he is also available if you have any questions or comments.
Comments by council?
You know, I think the product is excellent. I think the company is excellent. What I'm trying, what I'm struggling with is justifying the $171,000 over budget that we're spending on this. Now, you said that we're gonna save $50,000 a year. Is that something that we have come up with, or is that something the company? Can you tell me how we're saving $50,000 a year?
That is based on studies done by synthetic turf associations and group, where they've looked at the typical costs associated with maintaining a natural turf field, you know, the labor, the materials, the watering costs, whatnot. And then, they looked at the same, if you will, on the same ledger side of what's involved in maintaining the synthetic turf. And it's, you know, $55,000 per year to maintain a natural turf field, and about $5,000 a year to maintain a synthetic turf field.
Is that like labor to mow and?
To mow, to?
Fertilize?
To re-stripe a natural turf field, the materials to re-stripe, to re-sod, so forth.
The other thing I would share with you, I talked to the City of Elk Grove, and they said they're installing this in four of their parks. And the, one of the regrets that they have is that they didn't ask for the longer warranty on the base because it is so critical, and if it's not done properly, it could cause you to have to pull up what you've done, and it'd be very expensive. Do you know the difference in the two-year, or the extended warranty over the one-year on the base? Because they said that is what is critical, that base has gotta be perfect, without even a piece of gravel left on it. So?
I don't have those costs. That would have to be something inquired from the contractor. But if you will, like I said, you know, the specifications are very detailed, very tightly written, and the way they're written, that essentially, field installer and the city inspection almost work hand-in-hand with the contractor to make sure that base, that foundation base is level, you know, according to specifications, and is compacted well, drains well, and so, if you will, the focus is all that on front. I think the Elk Grove's concern is that they're, like I said, they're doing over a half a million square feet of turf. We're doing a little bit less than 100,000. So, if you will, their problem, if you will, is magnified five times, while, you know, if you will, we have the ability to focus just on our one field. When I went out and looked at the city's park, I mean, it was just acres upon acres of, at the time, base rock foundation. And FieldTurf had come in, there's, the Elk Grove's, actually, Consume This CSD's inspector had come in and had marked up the field, this needs to be changed, this needs to be done, what you're proposing here isn't gonna work. And so, if you will, those issues are being worked up upfront before it's even covered with the turf.
And my final question is, if we spend this additional money, is that gonna take away from something else that we had planned for Walker Park? I mean, a lot of the funding comes from development funds and things like that, which it doesn't look like we're gonna have very many impact fees to put in on parks in the near future because of the economy. So, are we spending too much money upfront where we're not gonna be able to do some of the other things? Are we gonna include, you know, some bleachers or some of the other things that was part of the park?
Let me answer this. Certainly, spending any additional money over what the original budget means we can't buy something later. There is no next phase of the park, that is $200,000. Like I said, we're only asking for additional appropriations currently within the budget that was established when we were the construction contract. But just like last week with Lincoln Parking Lot, we didn't, we're getting, we don't wanna start the whole project with only a $35,000 contingency. We feel it's better to ask for our position now in case we need it, rather than wait until we're absolutely out of money and have to come back and ask for it. Right now, there is no planned expenditure that this would be clueless from doing because development is down, but it is money that you would, if you don't approve this tonight, then you would potentially have this money to spend on something else. But right now, we have not scheduled the next phase because of the revenues being down. It's gonna be pushed back up, and something we'll be addressing as part of the upcoming budget and CIP that's gonna start here sometime in February.
So, I guess, given the projections for the future, the near future, you still feel confident that we should go ahead and use our contingency money and then add $200,000 to make up for that?
This is in part why we have the contingency. We wish the engineer had come up with a little better estimate. He had a better handle on it. We did on what the costs were. We stand behind the recommendation. I think we have a chance to put in this field, make this a destination athletic field for golf, something that a lot of other bigger communities don't have. For us to have one, Elk Grove may have four, but for us to have one, I think is a nice addition to our ability to provide recreational activities for the community. It's gonna help the Parks and Rec Department not have to hire all additional staff in order to maintain it. So, I think, yeah, we need to put the money in, the capital investment, right now, because you certainly don't want to, a year, two years from now, say, gee, I wish we provided that better improvement. We're also taking advantage of a discounted price off of the latest state-of-the-art material by this provider. So, I think it's an opportunity we shouldn't pass up.
What's the difference between natural turf costs versus this? Is there that much difference? Did we put in natural turf? Because I kinda need to have the comparison.
What I got, when I looked, when I looked all this information up online, was about three times the initial cost.
Three to four.
So?
Just three to four times the initial capital cost, but then you don't have that cost. And you also have an intangible cost. We can say we're saving so many pounds of chemicals and so many hours of mowing, or so many gallons of paint, but you have much better usage, and much more frequent usage, and you don't have to cancel events because if someone goes out there too soon and ruins the field, then you have to cancel events. That does not have a hard dollar cost, it has a social cost.
Yeah, I have some of the same sticker shock. The three times use that you quoted here to Parks and Rec, I guess I'd direct the question. Based on your current backlog of events and whatnot, I mean, is that existing usage that we'll get in the first year, or is that capacity that we don't know if we have the interest to use it three times as much? I know that's an educated guess.
Yeah, well, an educated guess, it's, well, soccer is becoming a year-round sport. You're aware of that. It's, you know, your football, you have a season, then you take a break. With soccer being a year-round sport, they play in wind, snow, hail, and whatever. Okay, they play their games. And at times, or historically, I've shut down veteran soccer fields, or only lighted because it's not, it would just get thrashed, you know? And so, at one time, it's been years ago, I had it redone just to get it back up to some decent.
I remember that.
I think that cost, don't quote me on this, I believe around $30,000, just to get it back up to par in that capacity. I had a meeting this evening at 5:30 with our competitive soccer, and they, as we speak right now, there's about 14 teams that are currently playing all golf kits, and they play throughout tournaments. And so, I made arrangements, since we haven't had any rain, to utilize a veteran soccer field, the Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays. If I could have a facility available seven days a week, they'd be out there seven days a week. That's the sport. And like I said, I think it's a much-needed facility, amenity, here in our community to address, say, our soccer programs, that is probably one of the larger programs that the community has in numbers of participation.
Okay. The Field of Dreams complex, Manteca Voice, I know you're quite familiar with it. It's got a few years on it now, I forget how many years it's been there. What was it compared to what we're now looking at? Is that one or two generations behind this product? Anyone heard?
One thing about the Big League Dreams on Manteca, and I've given Willie, the mayor, a little static on it, is they did the infield's, the synthetic turf, and so it looks brown, but then their outfield, they went with grass. So, it's kind of, but they're very pleased with it. In fact, Redding, the City of Redding has a similar facility as Manteca, and all their, all those fields are synthetic, infield and outfield, so they get more use from the rain that happens up there in that area.
Well, as I say, the sticker shock is a bit much, and I think you've done a good job presenting why the value is there and the price, and it's kind of a now or never. I don't see investing in a turf field to tear it out later and do this, so it's kind of a now or never. The $50,000 a year may, you know, be a little overstated, given, you know, it's the industry number, so to speak, but it's probably a reasonable estimate. A million gallons of? but it's probably a reasonable estimate. A million gallons of water per year, I found to be an attractive savings. Uh, certainly, the, the chemicals and everything else we don't put onto the ground for runoff and everything else. So, um, I, I think I'll be willing to support the staff's recommendation. I'm also a little, I know why you're asking for the additional contingency and I don't disagree with the logic of it, but that on top of the sticker shock makes it a little harder to swallow. So just, just get that message, so to speak.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some comments. The, the $50,000 a year savings, uh, kind of along the lines of Dar- what Daryl was talking about. The independent report that I read shows the savings actually at about $20,000 a year. What, what you got to factor in according to the report, you have, uh, additional operations that need to take place on the field every year, like possible re-striping. I don't know what the, the service life is on the striping that we put on the field. Did we get any information on that? You act, apparently you have to sweep this product down about three times a year also. It requires special equipment that you have to rent.
Well, no, actually, the, the, if you look at the, the attached agreement proposal from FieldTurf, it actually includes sweeper as well as, uh, uh, another, um, it's a more intensive maintenance device that essentially, uh, redistributes the, the infill within the, the turf. So, that cost actually is, uh, for that equipment is included in the price.
Do you think it's something that we need to actually purchase as part of the whole package?
Well, the, the sweeper, FieldTurf is actually, um, um, according to the proposal, for free. I mean, so-
Well, we know there's nothing-
Not to look at gift sweeper in the mouth, so to speak, but, uh, um, that, that, if you will, that's included with the purchase price. I mean, it's maybe like a set of glasses with a free fill-up, but, uh, but we are getting the equipment.
I know access to, to a lot of the other synthetic fields around Sacramento County are limited. Like, Cordova High School, first three or four years that they put that, that football field in, Cordova High School, you couldn't actually access the field unless you were part of an organized activity. Is that something that we're planning on doing at our park as well?
That's correct. It, it's going to be completely fenced in.
Okay.
Yeah. And it has to be, but one thing, um, uh, I'm familiar, they, they have a FieldTurf in South Lake Tahoe Middle School. You're aware, I go to Tahoe quite a bit and it survives the snow, uh, be under four feet of snow all winter. But what you really got to be cautious about, you have to have basically site supervision there, is no gum chewing and sunflower seeds. Cause those type of, two, say, candies can cause problems.
I agree with making, making the purchase because I do think it makes golf a destination opportunity for, for some of these events. But there's a lot more to this synthetic field than, than I think we're, we're evaluating tonight. Um, if we have the natural turf field, it's more accessible to Joe Schmo golf resident that wants to go out to the park and fly a kite or play on the field. They're not going to have that opportunity because the access is going to be limited. Um, there's the additional equipment that we talked about, the striping. The, the baits that, that they use, what is the expectancy on that? Do we think that that will survive the life of the entire product without having to be patched up or?
Correct. Yeah, it, it, it's, over time, it's the turf that gets worn down, the infill that gets redistributed. So the base itself is expected to last, if you will, several, uh, field cycles. Now, certainly, when you get to a point where you're, you're replacing the synthetic turf field, then you can look and address any issues that have, may have popped up in the foundation. But certainly, the foundation is expected to last at least the first cycle and even beyond.
The new product that, that we're getting basically for free, the upgrade, are there any other facilities locally that have installed the new product?
It hasn't even been announced to them, to the buying public. Their FieldTurf is going to announce it, uh, I believe, uh, toward the later end of the first quarter of 2010.
We're confident, you know, outside of what they're telling us, that this is a better product than, than the standard product that they, they sell.
Yes, and that, and looking at FieldTurf, they, if you will, back up their product with independent research, um, you know, uh, doing studies and s- and such like that. So, fairly confident, um, you know, that it, it's going to live up to their expectations and if you will, they have to back it up with, with their eight-year insured warranty.
Right. I think you said that there's a representative from FieldTurf here?
Correct.
Just had to ask you a couple of questions.
Could you come?
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Thank you.
I know staff was touching on the fact that, um, just up here to the podium.
Can you state your name real quick?
Yeah, my name's David Brown.
You're, you're based in Auburn, correct?
Yeah, I'm a, uh, native Californian and a resident of Grass Valley, Nevada, Nevada County.
That's appropriate, you got to admit.
Yeah. Who would have figured- I'm not that much of a marketing whiz, actually. My brother.
What, what installs have you guys done locally, your, your independent company?
Well, we're an exclusive installer for FieldTurf. We install 100% of the fields in the Sacramento region.
Okay.
We also are a base contractor. I have an A, a general engineering contractor's license and we, the most recent installation we actually built the base foundation on was at, um, Vanden High School in Fairfield, just a couple of months ago.
What is the prevailing wage classification that you use for your, your workers?
Carpet layer.
Okay, carpet layer.
Yeah.
And that, that includes the site work as well?
No, site work would be, um-
Labors?
Labors and, and, uh, equipment operators.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other questions?
There's got to be more.
No, I don't have any. I'm for the project.
Thank you for your, uh, for your answers.
Okay.
Again, like I said, I think there's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration with this, but I do think that in the long run, it's a better investment.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Oh, before you do that.
Oh, okay.
Um, I talked to Jason, our city manager, earlier. Would you go over the funding aspects of where the money's going to come for this, but how it's going to save money, uh, from the general fund for maintenance? That would make me feel better.
Sure. Well, the, the money that we have for the construction of parks is a lot different than the money that we have for the ongoing maintenance of parks. Um, as mentioned earlier, we collect money from developers to both purchase land for future parks as well as construct future parks. In this case, um, there's a park capital fund that we collect that, uh, we're using to construct Walker Park for the, into this entire phase. Um, and that money can only be used for the construction of parks. We can't use it for ongoing maintenance. We can't use it for staff costs or anything else. It's only for, for construction costs. Um, once the park is constructed, then we have to switch to a different fund in order to provide the maintenance. And that typically comes from a variety of funding sources. Um, predominantly, our O6 Fund, which is our Culture and Recreation Fund. Um, we also, um, have funding that comes from the Landscape and Lighting Districts, um, in some cases. And, um, you know, potentially the general fund as well. And so, one of the advantages with the turf, the artificial turf, is that, um, we are going to reduce those ongoing costs that are going to come out of the funds that are really most impacted by the economy right now, which is our Culture and Recreation Fund, our General Fund, Landscape and Lighting Districts. And so, um, the thing that, that, that I really like about this is the fact that it is reducing the ongoing maintenance, which will help reduce or, or, um, reduce the impact on those more critical funds right now. That, like I said, the capital fund, if we, if we bring that capital fund down to $0, it doesn't affect our ability to provide service to the community. It does affect our ability to build future parks, but there's no, there's nothing else that we could potentially do with those funds. So, um, we're comfortable recommending, uh, the purchase of this equipment at this time because this is our number one priority in the city is to get this park moving.
So Jason, do you think the, the savings that we will, um, incur from, like our General Fund and, uh, L and L, those others, do you have any idea what that would be?
You know, we haven't done a detailed analysis as far as what it might cost for annual maintenance on one of those turfs. I think it's a combination of, uh, things such as the savings on, on the water, um, more importantly, the time it takes to, to mow the fields and the time from our Parks and Recreation staff, as well as all the material that is involved in that. Um, and I don't know if Troy has a, a, a good number as far as what we might pay now for annual maintenance of a, of a natural turf field like veterans' field in order to get a kind of comparison as far as what we might be able to, to save in that regard. You guys, do you have a, Troy, do you have a good number as far as what it might cost on an annual maintenance? I don't think we do, do we?
Um, I'm not sure, uh, about the annual maintenance for the, uh, synthetic FieldTurf. I know recently, we took the veteran soccer field out of the landscape contract and that saved us about $30,000 a year. Um, another thing I want to include on this is if we're allowing the kids to play soccer during the winter time, the possibility of the turf getting tore up and having bare areas which are basically, uh, muddy, muddy spots. It's a lot safer for the kids on the ne- uh, synthetic turf. It would reduce, uh, potential injuries and liability to the city.
The $30,000 number is probably as good as you're going to get because that's what it costs us to pay the contractor to maintain that, that field.
Mm-hmm. That's just the maintenance, not the water?
That doesn't include the water.
Mm-hmm.
And it is a, a slightly smaller field than what we're proposing because it is a dual-purpose field with synthetic turf, uh, the football and soccer field, um, so I think it would be a little, little more expensive for, for the dual-purpose field. That doesn't include any of the time and materials for mining out the, um, uh, the lines for the different, uh, games that we play.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the big concerns that we have with moving forward with Walker Park at all is the fact that we're going to incur additional maintenance costs going forward. And so, the fact that a portion of that park is an artificial turf, which is going to significantly reduce those costs, is one of the reasons why we felt more comfortable moving the project forward.
Okay. Voice, did you have a sound?
Yeah, I just like to conclude with that, uh, you know, I think, uh, our parks in this community are quality parks and I, and I'm recommending, well, let's continue the trend, uh, meaning another group of our community, the soccer participants. And I'd just like to add, besides cost savings and everything, and, and Troy briefly touched on it, is, you know, liability issues. Like I said, go down to Greer, look at Greer. That was just a football season. I've had people off that. Uh, Troy's, uh, guys went out there aerated and fertilized it, but it took a beating because it was going four nights a week with 120 kids a night in football. And your natural turf fields just take a beating when you get some rain and everything of that nature. And theoretically, you should shut them down, give it a break, but with, you know, soccer being year-round, your softball season's coming up. Uh, it, it's a much-needed amenity here in the community and it's, it's the trend. Uh, as I, I said earlier, I, I met with the, our soccer coaches, our youth soccer coaches, and it's the trend in the other cities and they feel unfortunate. They practice on a natural turf field and then they go to an artificial turf, which, well, is a disadvantage because they don't have the opportunity to practice on one, so.
So Voice, if it comes down to, uh, financially, where, when we get further into Walker Park, you have to give up something because of this? You're okay with it because of going with this, this turf, this market?
By all means, by all means. And I, like I said, uh, I think it's so important for the community to get the turf in. Uh, Voice, we don't have the money for the bleachers, but you, you need a field and you can wait for the bleachers.
The other nice thing about the way we're doing it with two natural turf and one artificial is Councilman Meredith's concern about accessibility. Whereas if Elk Grove built five fields and none of those are accessible to the public, as opposed to now, at least, there will be two natural fields that will be open to the general public and one that will be more reserved for, um, leagues and tournaments and so forth. So there'll still be accessibility, maybe not on that field, but in the park for somebody that wants to go out and fly a kite.
And the, the three fields, all the ones, uh, for economic development to host tournaments in the near future here in the community.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion. Move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay. No further discussion or comments. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, next item, award of construction management services and, and engineering construction support services for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
Real quick, leading mayor, members of the council. Uh, the next item before you is a recommendation for award of two contracts. The first is to Somus Engineering in the amount of $1,222,568 for construction management services in conjunction with the wastewater premium plant upgrade project. The second contract is with West Jost Associates in the amount of $950,160 for engineering design support services for the same project. In November 2009, council authorized the city manager to execute a contract with Kuya Construction, uh, for the upgraded project improvements. That award was contingent upon approval of the State Revolving Fund loan and that commitment. We received that commitment, uh, first week in December. Uh, Kuya actually began work today. Moved trailers in, we had the kickoff meeting, so that project is underway. Uh, receipt of the approval of the State Revolving Fund loan also allowed us then to be reimbursed for other contract costs. And so, we're bringing these two issues before you tonight. This is engineering construction management services and construction, uh, support services. As a project designer, assistance from West Jost is critical to successfully complete the project. They designed it. We'll need their help to make certain the contractor builds what they designed and to interpret their design. We negotiated the scope of services with West Jost for these, uh, these, uh, work tasks. A copy of their, their scope of services is included in your agenda report. I won't read it all through here tonight. Uh, we ultimately negotiated a fee of $950,160 with West Jost. This final fee did include a shift of approximately $160,000 in scope that they originally included to the construction management firm. This is for electrical inspection work. We felt it was better housed under the construction management, uh, contract. For the CM services, we solicited proposals from six different construction management firms. Well, staff reviewed the proposals along with the design engineer and narrowed it down to three firms, Somus, Nolte, and URS. The original proposed fees from these three firms ranged from just over $1 million to just under $1.5 million. Uh, we held interviews with each of the three firms and after the interviews, all of the raters, we now selected Somus as the best qualified to provide these needed services. They also had the lowest initial proposed cost. A copy of Somus's scope of work is also included in your agenda report. Their tasks were even longer than West Jost, so I won't go through them all again unless you have specific questions. Uh, once we selected Somus, we sat down with West Jost staff, Somus staff, to make sure that we had no overlaps in services and also no gaps. That's how we discovered that we had an overlap in the electrical inspection services. Uh, Somus's proposed final fee was $1,222,586. Again, that includes a $160,000 transfer. Uh, cost for construction management services for a project like a wastewater treatment plant is a little more complicated than some of our other projects. It typically ranges between 13 and 15 percent. Somus's fee is approximately 10 and a half percent. And we consider that to be fair and reasonable. Their proposed rates included a 10% discount from last year's rates. So they're two years behind in their rate increases. They also gave us a 10% discount relative to the current state of the economy. Uh, when we awarded the construction contract, we, at the council, we estimated the combined cost between the design support and the construction management was just over $2 million. Based upon these final costs, it's about $2.17 million, a little bit higher than what we thought. We got a little too zealous in our pencil sharpening in terms of our estimating. Um, the project does have an established $750,000 contingency. We believe that is adequate to- We believe that is adequate to cover this increase. There are adequate funds in the approved CIP in the fiscal year nine, ten budget toward these contracts as recommended. These costs are all being funded by the state revolving fund loan and these amounts were included in the estimates provided for the state. The construction costs came a lot less. We have a lot of extra contingencies, somewhere about two million dollars in the revolving fund loan commitments. We have plenty of money coming from the state in order to fund this. There are a couple of alternatives. Council could direct staff to provide this work ourselves, however we lack the technical expertise. In order to do so, we also lack the bodies. This equates to about sixteen thousand man-hours or person-hours of effort over the next year with a significant amount of effort between the design and construction inspection. Staff recommends that council authorize the award of both contracts to West Jost and Somus respectively. Representatives from both West Jost and Somus are here tonight. If you have any questions, you'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, government members?
Well, I think you've done a good job in pairing up what should be done and who's doing it. And I was going to say, it seems like some of the checks and balances, some appear duplicate versus checks and balances perhaps, but I understand how you're trying to get there and what you're trying to do, and so I think as a total package, you're on the right track.
Councilman Meredith?
No questions.
No questions?
I was going to say, more importantly, is that we are on track, so. Thank you.
All right, listen, everything up there. And I talked to you before. Okay?
If there's nothing further, I will move staff's recommendation.
Second?
Okay. No further discussion, I don't believe. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item?
Next item, citywide traffic capital improvement program.
As you do good work.
Northeast area public facilities program and community facilities fee update.
The next item before the council is a recommendation that you receive a progress information update, solicit, receive public comments, provide direction as deemed appropriate for updates, the citywide traffic capital improvement program, northeast area public facilities program, and the community facilities fees program. In January two thousand nine, council ordered a task order to OmniMeans to update the current general plan, other than current TCIP, northeast area, NEA, and CFF programs. This was done after the general plan twenty thirty had been adopted. Their update included updating existing project cost estimates, preparing estimates for new projects, infrastructure improvements deemed necessary to support the general plan, and establishing a new fee structure based on that general plan. They were also tasked to update the CFF to provide funding for an expansion of many public facilities, including those included in the new parks master plan. In July of this past year, OmniMeans presented an update to the council summarizing where they were at at that point, the project parameters that had been collected to date, the deficiencies in the current program, and came back with some preliminary cost estimates. And also, I'm counsel asking to come back and do the process before we finalize the report. We have now completed the draft study. Staff has had a chance to look over it. Their OmniMeans work to date includes a preliminary fee analysis to support the desired projects, and they're making a presentation to the council here tonight. Following the presentation tonight, we have scheduled a development review meeting with members of the building community on January fourteenth, so we can solicit their input and their reaction to the proposed fee structure. And then depending upon comments received tonight and at that meeting, we anticipate bringing the updated fee schedule on the entire program back for council adoption, hopefully at the February sixteenth council meeting. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Marty.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor Shelton, members of the council, my name is Marty Inoway. I'm principal of OmniMeans and the project manager for this study. Here with me tonight is Victor Erzick of Goodwin Consulting, who will be sharing in this presentation. Are we having the same problem?
Looks like there might be some blank slides at the beginning. There you go.
Oh, that works.
Or you just can't count. They start with one.
I had two on this thing. I think it's the two on, I don't know what's going up. But anyway, the purpose in this two thousand nine update is to update a number of your fees, including the two thousand six TCIP fee, which is the traffic capital improvement program fee, the update to the two thousand six reduced NEA TCIP fee, update to the NEA Phase Two fees for water, drainage, and landscaping, and Victor will be sharing the update of the general government fee, update of the parks and recreation fee, and the addition of the new library fee. The purpose of the update is really to reflect your recently updated general plan that you adopted in April of two thousand eight. With that adoption, you added considerable area for new development as well as the addition of roads and other capital facility requirements. We also, as a part of this update, updated all the associated costs for those improvements and then as we're required to then reallocate those costs consistent with the requirements of AB sixteen hundred or Government Code sixty-six thousand to appropriately come up with a nexus for fee allocation to both residential and non-residential uses. As you recall, your general plan expanded your past city limits, adding areas from the notch to the east of Marango to north of Twin Cities. And with that expansion and some additional development on the west side as well, added considerable growth and opportunity to your cities. Specifically what that additions were back in two thousand six, there was residential development opportunity left of about two thousand additional dwelling units. With the two thousand nine general update that occurred in, sorry, in two thousand eight, we went to the development potential of residential units up to nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-two, which is about a seventy-five hundred residential unit increase. For non-residential uses, including retail, commercial, office, industrial uses, we had an inventory as a part of your current, your past general plan of a little over three million square feet of opportunity. With your general plan update, you identified development potential of in excess of thirteen million or an addition of approximately ten million additional square foot opportunity for non-residential uses within your community. Along with the planned expansion of your land development capability within your city limits, we also identified the future transportation infrastructure needs. You can see not only will new, existing roads will need to be expanded, those are the dash lines, but also wholly brand-new roads and interchanges would be required in other areas as well. In total, we are looking at, with this two thousand nine TCIP update, we're looking at in excess of four hundred and fifty million dollars in total transportation improvement costs. That includes all roads, intersections, and interchanges that would be required to support the, your general plan. Of that total cost, approximately a little under three hundred million dollars would be associated with this fee. This compares with the two thousand six TCIP total cost as a part of your past general plan of around a hundred and eighty-one million dollars and an associated TCIP fee cost that was spread within the fee of about eighty million dollars. When we were here as part of our first presentation, we indicated that we would be looking at alternative methodologies for the spread of that cost, recognizing that you expanded your area into your sphere of influence, and we wanted to make sure that we just didn't automatically go into your past spread methodology, which was to look at the, your entire transportation system or network as a system. So there'd be basically a uniform fee that you, what we're trying to achieve was a uniform quality of traffic flow or an acceptable level of service throughout the city, and therefore everybody should pay, all new development should pay proportionally equal for that opportunity. We looked at the new development areas and said, gee, maybe they should have a proportional different cost, and so we created what we called a zone of benefit evaluation, and we presented that analysis option to you last time. We worked closely with staff, came up with a detailed methodology, and looked at potentially nine different zones of benefit and found that there were significant variations in fee, fees that could be charged, and it became very difficult to work through all the methodologies to get, one, an adopted fee, and then to administer the fee as well. And so at the end of the day, we went back to, after testing the alternative methods, going back to the citywide system allocation as being the most appropriate methodology to assign. So you will see basically a uniform TCIP fee. As we looked into the northeast area and with the expansion all around the northeast area, before, when the city was created, the city predominantly existed to the west and south of the NEA and was fairly independent. So when that area developed, starting back in nineteen eighty-nine, a CFD and a specific plan was created and was fairly isolated, so there was costs that could be separately and isolated, costs that could be associated to that area. That condition with the development potential within the city being expanded to the notch, which is just south of the NEA, to beyond Marango now to Cherokee, to the east of the NEA, and then also to the north, north of Twin Cities, all of a sudden, it is a part of the much greater part of your entire city now. Now, and so we said, gee, do we need to have a separate NEA fee associated to that area? And the conclusion was, as we spread the cost, it seemed to be more appropriate that we should envelop the NEA traffic CIP into the overall TCIP, and that's what we did. But we also realized when we did that, that the NEA people, the development, remaining development opportunity in the NEA, the properties there had already been paying CFD tax that was initiated back in nineteen eighty-nine, and so they should be credited that portion of, against that fee. So we incorporated the NEA area into the TCIP, but then made sure that we did not double charge any of the remaining undeveloped properties for the amount of the tax that they were paying as a part of the CFD for the NEA. Ultimately, as the city looked to complete the updates of their sewer, water, and drainage studies and looking at fee updates there, we're, it's been suggested that we probably envelop the separate NEA fee that's associated to those facilities into an overall fee as well when those master plans are complete. At the end of the day, what we're looking at is the, is that the citywide TCIP that is outside the NEA, our proposed fee now has been reduced from the current fee of roughly thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars down to eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars for a single-family unit. For non-residential or for retail uses, there's also a similar drop from eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents to fifteen dollars and forty-two cents. Roughly in both cases, about a sixteen percent drop in fee costs from what would have been charged to date until you adopt this new fee. Inside the NEA, the fee, as you can see, is higher than the citywide fee. We talked about a reduced traffic portion of that fee, and that fee relative to the eleven thousand, seven forty-three is down to about ten thousand dollars. But there's the other NEA Phase Two costs associated to water, drainage, and landscape improvements that are built into the NEA fee that's shown there. And we can see a similar drop in fees now proposed for inside the NEA from roughly twenty thousand, nineteen dollars for a single-family unit to seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars, and also for the non-residential or retail from nineteen, nine, ninety-seven dollars, which is the current fee, down to sixteen eighty-three. So overall, both within the citywide and within the NEA, we're looking at a fifteen to sixteen percent drop in fees for transportation-related improvements. And I'll go back to the end of the presentation, but I'm going to turn the rest over to Victor, who's going to talk about government, parks and recreation, and the additional library fee.
Okay. The general government fee was also updated, and the general government fee will fund a variety of municipal facilities, including the City Hall expansion, the remaining debt service on the police, on the existing police building, as well as future vehicles and equipment for the police department, improvements for the corporation yard, as well as the municipal services center expansion. We've also included a corporation yard for the Parks Department and vehicles that they will require in the future. And another new facility incorporated into general government fee is a new library facility. And so when we take all those facilities and allocate them on a benefit basis, we get the proposed fee shown here in the table. So for a single-family residential unit, the proposed fee comes to two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars per unit. Comparing that to your current fee, which is two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, that's a decrease of approximately forty-nine dollars, which equates to about a two percent decrease. For non-residential, we've chosen the retail land use category. The proposed fee here is twenty-three cents per square foot, that is building square foot. That's down from two dollars and eighty-one cents. That's a decrease of two dollars and fifty-eight cents per square foot, or ninety-two percent. And basically, that, the reason for the larger deduction has to do with the fact that now, because we've got an expanded area, your boundary is expanded, so we're allocating the cost among a lot more non-residential development. And in addition, we looked at the way your current fee is allocated, and we thought that there was too much of a, it looked like too much burden was placed on non-residential development, so we changed the allocation formula, and those two factors resulted in the significant reduction in the fee.
Victor, just a clarification too. On the new library component of that fee, was that only allocated to the residential?
Exactly, yeah. We also updated your parks fee, and this was based on your draft parks master plan. So we incorporated the level of services in that draft master plan, as well as the facilities and those facility costs included in that master plan. And the fee that we came, that we calculated for a single-family residential unit came to ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars per unit. Comparing this to your current fee, which is eight thousand and nine dollars, this is a significant increase of two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, or approximately a thirty-six percent increase over your current fee. So the sum of these three fee components, and that's the traffic fee, the general government fee, and the parks fee, when you combine government fee and the parks fee, when you combine them, uh, here are the results in this table. So for a single family residential unit, um, in the area outside your, your northeast area, the, the total proposed fee comes to $25,459 compared to your current fee, which is $24,895. This is an increase of $564 or approximately a 2% increase. For, uh, retail development, the proposed fee comes to $15, $15.55 per building square foot. That's down from your current fee of $21.17 or a difference of about $5.52 per square foot. That's a reduction of approximately 26%. Now, inside the NEA area, the proposed fee, uh, comes to $30,459 per single family unit. Uh, that is down, uh, from $30,569 per unit, uh, a difference of about $110. For retail, uh, in the NEA, uh, proposed fee is $17.06. That is down from $23.26 per square foot or a reduction of about $6.20. So a decrease of about 26, uh, 27%. So how does this compare to, um, cities in the local area? We've included several here. Um, some of the nearby cities include Elk Grove, Lodi, Stockton, Rancho Cordova, and then a little further away, Whippon, um, West Sacramento is fairly close, uh, Series, La Corte, Manteca and Folsom. Um, the, the proposed fee for Gulf, a single family unit and what we've, we're showing here are the traffic, the parks and the CFF fee. Um, we come in about mid-range point. Uh, we're not the highest and we're certainly not the lowest. One thing you do need to consider here, however, is not all the financing is included because some cities will include financing through an assessment district or through a community facilities district. So we're really not looking at apples to apples here, but it's a, but it's a, you know, give you a kind of a sense as to what, uh, the fees are for these three fee components. And here it is for, uh, retail property. This is on a per square foot basis. Again, the proposed fee for Gulf is in yellow. And again, we're somewhere in the middle.
Moving on, uh, where, where we are and looking at, uh, priorities, one of the things that, uh, as we finish up this presentation is to talk about the priorities. And I think the city council has set them well, uh, because we're working on a number of these projects, including the Central Gulf interchange modification. Uh, total cost of around, uh, could be, uh, we're hoping much less, but we programmed $50 million TCIP allocation, uh, is $22,400. The Twin Cities interchange, the interim modifications that, uh, that we're in design on as well, roughly $5 million, of which $4 million is associated to, um, the, uh, TCIP. Uh, some of the other, uh, important, uh, components, uh, if you look at Central Gulf interchange, uh, to the, uh, east, it does not connect to, uh, Marengo Road as a part of your general plan. So that, those roads need to be completed to the east. Although C Street connects to Bosso, the A Street connection heading east i- is not complete yet and that road will eventually connect to, um, to Marengo Road. Also, Carillion will, uh, continue south of, uh, Simmerhorn once, uh, and that is a, a major improvement that also needs to be, uh, constructed. And that is, um, included as a part of one of your priority projects that we've identified. Uh, and then lastly, uh, Twin Cities Road, uh, when we complete the interchange, uh, interim improvements, the, uh, the improvements, uh, to the east, uh, possibly, eh, what we have here in, in the program is a six lane widening. Possibly that could be phased to, to four lanes and then to six lanes. But that's essentially from, uh, say around 99 to Carillion Boulevard, uh, to, to the east that needs to be, uh, completed to, um, uh, meet the, uh, first, uh, set of improvements that, uh, that we think are the, the next priority that, that for the most part has been, already been pursued. In terms of the remaining tasks, uh, present draft lineings. That's what we're doing tonight, uh, to you. And, uh, as, uh, Greg mentioned, we are going to be meeting with, uh, uh, the stakeholders under the mayor's forum, uh, stakeholders and developers on, on, uh, January 14th and, uh, be going over, uh, presenting, uh, this information and, and sharing concerns. We are already prepared in executive summary. Some of this information will be provided so they can be prepared as well to, for us to have a, a meaningful discussion. Following that, uh, that, uh, meeting, uh, we will confer with the staff as to how we take the, this additional input, both from tonight and from the, uh, the, uh, January 14th meeting and work to finalize the report. And then we will be back before you again, uh, to, uh, present the final, finalized results of our, our report and seek your adoption of our study, your study. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
When you were figuring the parks fee increase, do you factor in any revenue from the flea market to help out with those costs? With the golf market, excuse me?
No, we don't.
And what's the timeframe that you're looking at by collecting these fees? Are we looking to, to get enough money for these projects over?
We're not necessarily looking at a timeframe. We're looking at the total capacity of, of your general plan. And so in calculating, uh, the fee, we calculated the number of park acres that would be required. Um, the master plan suggested also, uh, one aquatic center and, and one, uh, community, um, it was a, a community center, 30,000 square foot community center. So we included the cost of that as well. But we, we basically incorporated the standards that were laid out in, in the master plan. And that is, uh, for example, five acres of parkland per thousand residents, uh, five acres of open space per thousand residents and, um, one mile of trails, uh, per 4,000 residents. So incorporated those, uh, park standards, the costs that were, uh, recommended in the master plan and, uh, to develop the fee.
So this is, this would be parks in new development areas?
That's correct.
That these fees would be covering, not existing ones?
Correct.
Okay.
On your, uh, slide in our package, it's at the right page, number seven, your updated 2009 versus 2006 numbers. Can we get the breakout of that? If you get that sent to us electronically, where those numbers came from?
On page five?
Well, it's slide seven on my handout. 452 million versus 181.
Oh, yes. Uh, this is the, the cost essence themselves and we can get the breakout and we can provide that to you in summary of, uh, uh, interchange costs, all those associated to that.
But electronically, I don't want to find her.
No, you'll have it in a, uh,
Little CD with the, okay. If we could, um, Marty, I know you heard my comment and you probably know part where I'm going is, I still feel, I think you're doing what you're supposed to. You're making a recommendation of all the projects we need and adding up what the cost is. As you know, I have some differing opinions that we don't need the whole list you've put together. So being that what it is, I just want to see your breakout. But one of the projects listed as a priority, uh, you just went over, was the connection from Marengo to Crystal, uh, in comparison then to Carillion, uh, over to the new interchange. And, and again, I would say the Carillion one, I would put as the priority of the two, um, and may want further discussion when the time comes, is to the need for both. But again, tonight, that's not, you know, the point.
You're talking about these connections that's on here.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So if I was asked to prioritize and say, well, of the two, if you only could have one, that type of thing, that, that's all I'm getting at. If you can send the full list, it'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
And then my last comment would just be, uh, if you're going to go out, four comments. One, we'd like, I'd like anyone, I hope the whole council would, fairly good notes back to us, the comments you get at those upcoming meetings. So we can get both the tenor and texture of what you're going to hear in those meetings. But I would recommend on your slide 13, total fee comparison, I think we ought to propose under single family home, instead of a 2% increase, that let that be a wash with the other savings you have so that there would be no increase, that the number would at least not increase, stay the same. And it's basically a reallocation of the total fees. I'd rather we not recommend an increase at this time. And I think for the 2% difference, given that I don't think everything in the list necessarily, as I sit here tonight, it would have to be done. And this far away from doing it, I don't think it'd be a good time to recommend a 2% increase. I'd let the reallocations just come in at a wash for now. And then I still want to hear very much about the comments on the specifics. But again, good work and like I say, you're doing what you're supposed to do. Just, I, my list would come up a little skinnier than yours, that's all.
Any other comments?
I do. Thank you again for your presentation. You did a great job. One of the things that I wanted to suggest, uh, in regards to the way that we're calculating these fees, I think we have a real opportunity here to create some type of a spur for small businesses by creating a separate fee structure for buildings that are over 100,000 square feet of retail space, as opposed to buildings that aren't over that threshold. This would give small businesses an advantage in locating in Galt, which I think we would all prefer to see here in the community, as opposed to just being a big box drop off for, for all the companies across America. I think it fits more with our community and the makeup of our community and it fulfills the goals that we established with the general plan. Have you, have you ever experienced that with other cities?
One of the things that, uh, we are working on in terms of developing a list was, uh, there are special uses within, within the, the city. And so they're associated to trip generation rates. So, uh, as we admit, eh, we've been helping the city administer the, the, the fee over the past, since 2003. And one of the things is we end up with, um, mini storage to, to car washes, to other types of uses. We can look at, uh, and, and we have applied in other cities like Modesto and Turlock and things like that, uh, square footage, uh, ranges that have different fees that are associated to trip generation. Our bottom line is we have to have a reasonable justification for any stratification of, of fee allocation that we, we go through. And, uh, and so we, we can look at different ways of associating, because we do have to have a nexus relationship of associated trips. And if, if bigger box type users have greater trip generation, um, associated to, to their development, well then there, there can be a nexus to saying that there, there could be a larger fee, uh, associated to that.
Well, from my standpoint, a lot of the bigger box retail outlets, they're more dependent on some of the bigger capital improvement projects that we're proposing. Uh, some of the smaller projects wouldn't necessarily be as affected by a failing grade on our Twin Cities interchange as a 130,000 square foot store would be. Council have any feedback on that at all?
I do want to look at how it would be broken out as a proposal.
Okay. One of the things that you guys are already looking at, a variety of
Yes, we are.
Of categories of retail and how those might be separated out. So we can certainly bring that back and, and if we're ready to present it at the developer meeting on the 14th, to kind of go through that list and then bring it back to the council at the next meeting as well. Cause that's something, one of the concerns we've always had on implementing the current fee program is there's a lot of different categories of retail.
Right.
There's the big box, there's restaurants, there's industrial, I mean, there's all these different things and there's a one, kind of one fee fits all. And we're looking at different ways of implementing that based on trip generations that, uh, that they've been working on. So we'll have that information back.
As Andrew said, small businesses.
Well, I mean, the goal from my standpoint would be, we're sitting, uh, we're sitting here on the scale now, the yellow line. Maybe we stay in this range with anything over 100,000 square feet and we get down in this range when we get below a certain threshold that council considers to be a small business. So we make it more, make it more advantageous for a small business to locate in the city of Galt.
I think, and it's something the attorney's going to have to weigh in on, but the, the challenge we have is there's very specific government code regulations that dictate how we can allocate fees. And we can't necessarily just do it based on size of business or our desire to have small businesses come. It has to be based on a nexus with trip generations and the, and the impact of that business on the facilities in our community.
I think there might be ways to make it work though. Steve, do you have any feedback on that? I don't think it's impossible.
Well, I think as, as Marty indicated, there's got to be empirical data that supports the differentiation between the categories. Um, I think there's, uh, there's certainly room within, within the law for, uh, creativity. And I think that's what we've got to try to apply to the situation.
Okay. Other comments? Thank you. Did you have anything? Oh, you were looking at me, I thought. Thank you. Any comments from public? I see a hand going up.
My secretary general, Park Company, been in the good city here involved building houses and commercials since 1980. Gentlemen, do you know how many houses were built this year in Galt? One. And you know who built it? Read it. And do you know what's going to happen next year? Probably maybe, well, all depends what happens. So, uh, Elliott, when they come in, uh, with their, maybe their smaller houses. But besides that, if somebody doesn't look at those fees that we're paying right now at about $60,000 a house, there isn't much going to be development going on. So, uh, Elk Grove's dropped their fees, Williams dropped their fees and so on and so forth. Somebody's got to look at this and be serious about it because, uh, we, we, basically our, our subdivision down in Creekside, we are, we're like, we're not going, we can't sell a house. We can't sell a house because the fee is 60,000 right off the top. And, you know, we got to start at someplace. Now, we're, we're trying everything we can to come up with a, maybe even a smaller house down there. But $60,000 now, 50,000 fee, 10,000, 10,000, uh, uh, school fee, cause it's $5 a foot or $4 a foot. But someplace, somebody's got to say, well, we better look at the fees because we talk about jobs and we talk about other things. Uh, you know, one place is, is maybe we, if you build some houses, maybe somebody would be working on the houses. And now that would create the jobs in the city. And that's, that's a true fact. When we were building 40, 80 houses, uh, there was a lot of work going on. A lot of guys were eating lunches at different restaurants and so on and so forth. So I think we got to look at that real serious about what you're going to do in the next couple of years. Because I understand what we're doing today. And the other thing is, I was looking up there and I see the northeast area. Gentlemen, that northeast area has been going on since 1990. That's 20 years I've paid on eight acres out there. And now you want to change the fee and it's going to cost me more because I'm in the northeast area compared to that person coming in new from another area? Don't think so. So, you know, I mean, there's some of these things and actually we're going to wait till we get to this meeting. But, uh, I, I just can't sit here and say, oh, everything's rosy out there because you know it's not and especially in construction. And, and you do know that more than I, probably I do in commercial. But you, you, you want to talk to some commercial people. I was just in a meeting, uh, yesterday with Lex Taylor and there's a guy in there for, and I'll tell you this, a guy in there for, uh, broker, a broker. And he said, I'm sorry, these, these rental figures now, we used to be at $2 and $3 a foot. They're at $1.15 or $1.10. So, you know, you can talk all about what you want to talk about fees, but if you don't get something, realize it's, it's not going to happen. Cause it's not out there. They're saying, and these guys, they do this every day. They're saying five years. So, you know, and I, I think, uh, you got to have to go with that. Thank you.
Sir Gettrich, as a home builder, you probably don't want to hear this, but the cold truth is, we don't have a lack of housing in the city of Galt right now. is, we don't have a lack of housing in the city of gulf right now, especially not a lack of new housing. We've got an overabundance of vacant houses in the city right now. I do agree with you that we need to prepare for the future and find a, a median point in that scale that, that I'm sure you wanna get to. But, right now, I think the biggest need in the city of gulf is retail, and I, I'm glad that the impact fees that, that we were proposed tonight are reflective of the fact that that's what we're trying to target.
But if you don't, if you don't have rip tops, you aren't gonna get commercial. And that's, that's a proven fact. You can ask anybody that's in the, in the business.
The, the things that are really driving the fees, if you look at, um, non-residential, Mr. Meredith, Councilmember Meredith pointed out, those fees are actually going down about twenty-six percent. Retail office, industrial, which is one of the emphasis for this, this community and this council. On the residential side, those fees, if you just look at traffic, those are going down sixteen percent. If you look at general government, those are going down. The ones that are increasing are parks, and they kind of offset each other, so there's a net watch. But parks going up thirty-six percent, and that's based on the new master plan that was, actually, hasn't even been formally adopted yet. We're getting close to final adoption. Um, and so, it's all about amenities that the council wants for the community. There's a new aquatic center in there, there's a new community center, there's a standard as far as five acres per thousand people, there's trails, there's open space. To the extent that you wanna reduce fees, those are the things that you're gonna have to consider eliminating from that park master plan. That's, that's where the increase is, it's in your parks. It's not in your traffic, it's not in the other general government fees.
And those are amenities that new homeowners and new developments will obviously have the opportunity to enjoy. If you take those away, maybe it's more difficult for home builders to sell a house in the city of gulf. I mean, we're well-known in the region for having one of the best parks and recreation districts.
I think the point that-
And that's just carrying that message forward.
I think the point that Mike was trying to make was, if you don't have the homes, you're not gonna collect the fees to do these things. You know, they all kinda go together. And I think when it comes down to it, we're gonna have to make some decisions as to, I, I was on that park master plan committee, and it was basically a wish list. You know, that's kinda the way we approached it. What, what would you really like? And then we're everywhere from, anywhere from a, a BMX park to an equestrian park. Um, so I think when it comes down to it, we'll be needing to get pretty realistic with what we're gonna do.
To the extent that you have direction now for staff, cause our next presentation to the council will be potential for adoption of those fees. So, we want to get certain directions now. Are these fees in line with what you're thinking, or would you, are you expecting a further reduction or increase or modification that we've talked about in the past? Cause then we'll be able to go back and make those modifications now and present that to you later in February. So, we're, we're really looking for direction from council now. This wasn't just a nice presentation from the consultants, it was, give us some feedback on, are we on the right track as far as these fees go, or are you looking for more changes?
I, I would say then, based on that, I would like to continue this item. I'd like to get the breakout I requested and a similar breakout on the parks.
Give you all copies of the-
Yep.
-the park master plan, what goes into those-
Yep.
-that fee component?
Yeah, I think so.
The breakdown.
And then, two weeks from tonight, we can give you whatever, if there's any-
Well, and we-
-change to the direction before you go out.
We will have that developer meeting between now and the next meeting, so then we can provide you with feedback at that meeting too about what-
Yep.
-the developers had to say.
Yeah, that's why I said it'd be nice to get pretty good notes. They don't have to have word for word, but certainly capture the essence of the comments.
I think the, the twenty-seven percent reduction in retail fees is, is a pretty good benchmark. I mean, I don't think when we look at our, our utility rate increases or decreases this year, we're gonna look at a twenty-seven percent decrease, so.
Yep.
The other thing, if, if some of these comparisons with some of the cities specifically like Lodi, which is, you know, right next to us, there's a huge difference on your, on your graph, and I'm sure there's a, an explanation as to why there is such a difference. If there is something drastic like that, if you could make a note about why, if there is a difference. If there's not, we look kinda out of line, I think.
As I mentioned, sometimes it's difficult to, to, to quantify the difference, but because, uh, the funding may not, not necessarily come from impact fees, it may come from assessment districts, it may come from CFDs, it may come from sales tax. So, um, i- it varies from, from, from city to city as to how they, they fund, uh, their facilities. Um, probably the, if you wanted to get to a point of apples to apples, you'd have to look very intensely at their funding programs. And incorporate, uh, the funding from a variety of, of funding mechanisms such as the CFDs and the assessment districts and so forth. And that type of analysis would, would probably give you a better, uh, idea of where the cost or the fee burden lies.
Well, I'm not asking for that kind of detail, just maybe an asterisk indicating that there are some outstanding differences in what we're comparing.
Okay, let me take a look at that.
So, do I need to make a motion to, or do we just take no action?
Just direction, right?
I think we have direction. We'll bring back, you know, in the meantime, we'll send council copies of the, the detailed lists of the projects on the TCIP as well as the parks-
Right.
-side, and while we're at it, might as well do it on the, the general government stuff too, just so you can have a complete breakdown of all the, all the, the line items there. Um, and we'll bring that back at the next council meeting.
For example, in transportation, I assume there's still a walnut overcrossing, but not interchange, at least, in the list?
In, in fact, there is an interchange, not an overcross.
Okay, so, that's an example of, and again, personal opinion, I wish it had been built way back when they were going to build it, but it wasn't. And at this point, on my list of the various traffic improvements our city needs, that one isn't in my top ten type of thing. So that's why, I just want to see what totally is in there.
I don't know if you guys are available at the next meeting, which is, what, the nineteenth?
Do you want us to come in?
I don't need them to come back and make the presentation, but if they wanna be here to answer any questions or something, if that works out, that'd be great. But, my main thing, we've seen the list in one form or another. I'd like to see the current list that adds up to these numbers, just so I can see those updated numbers, that's all.
Yeah, we can-
Okay.
We'll see what we can do to accommodate schedule. I, I can't figure-
Sure.
Sure.
Like I say, I don't necessarily need them to come back, cause that's a big burden to everybody, as long as I have the list, at least for my needs.
Okay. Ready to move on? Any other questions? Thank you.
Is that direction you need?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is communications. Uh, with none, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Uh, roll call, please.
Word number Spain, here. Claire?
Here.
Spain, Meredith?
Here.
Doc?
Yeah.
Doc?
Lovely comment.
Okay. I'm not speaker, sweetheart.
Information consent agenda. There's three items. Would you read those places?
I would love, we have three items. Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of December fifteenth. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, acceptance of the treasurer's report for the period ending November two thousand nine.
Any questions for staff? If none, ask for a motion.
A move, we adopt the consent agenda?
Second. Most have been made and seconded. No further comments or questions. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Adjourn and reconvene to the Gulf City Council, City Court Report.
Yes, um, just a couple items. Uh, on January, okay, that's not good. On January thirteenth, the Parks and Recreation Meeting will be held here in the council chambers at seven PM. On January fourteenth, the Planning Commission Meeting in the council chambers at six thirty. And that takes us to our next meeting. Just a reminder of the annual Winter Bird Festival at McCaffrey Middle School on January thirty.
Staff, uh, comments by staff? None? Okay. Comments by council members?
Sorry.
I directed twice, I'm sorry.
Um-
You have five minutes, go ahead.
Five minutes? I was, uh, approached by the CFD a couple weeks ago about re-establishing or establishing some type of two-by-two meeting or, or quarterly, um, meeting with our council, staff, their, a couple members from their board, and their staff, just so we stay on top of issues. And so, for just to keep communication lines open, um, suggested bringing back to, to my council, who's gonna bring it back to his board and see if there's one interest in starting up something like that. We can talk about how often we need to meet. There's not a lot of issues going on right now, so maybe we only have to meet a couple times a year.
Ordinarily at the most.
You know, to have something, uh, established and wanna see one if the council is interested in establishing, and if you are, if there are two members of the council that'll be interested in serving on that two-by-two.
I would be interested in being a part of it, if we decide to do it.
I know Councilmember Hanes isn't here this evening, and I don't know if he has an interest in doing that or not. We could certainly bring it back at the next meeting. We've got all the council members here to-
Yeah. I think it would be good, I think the mayor ought to be one of the two, just given, A, he's the mayor, and B, his history in that area, and then another council member.
But, well, I won't say how many years in public safety.
Okay, well, I can bring it back at the next meeting.
I would be willing to do that, but the main thing is two council members, I think it'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I think the only other thing is just a reminder that we do have, um, goal-setting workshop with the council on February first, so looking forward to that. We'll be sending out more information, and there's some interviews that are gonna be coming up. Uh, we'll send out the agenda and, and the times and so forth, so. I think we have one more comment over here from Inez.
I just wanted to announce that the Click2Gov functionality for utility payments and utility access is functional as of this afternoon.
Hey, it is very-
So, um, it was included in the newsletter, and it is now on our website, that, um, our customers can now access their utility account. They will need their most recent utility bill, and they will have to call our office because of security reasons to get their, a route number. But with those two items, then they can set up a PIN number and start to utilize the program online. So we're happy, a lot of work effort there, um, from Michelle Neely, and Matt's definitely been helping her out, but, uh, a lot of work effort, so it was live this afternoon.
Good, sir. Good. Okay, comments by council members? Flashner Payne?
Uh, this is the time of the year for New Year's resolutions, so my resolution for the city of gulf is that we be healthy, happy, and prosperous in twenty-ten.
Did you look at mine?
No.
Councilmember Blair?
No, I, uh, no particular. Happy New Year to everybody, and, uh, it is a good time to change the batteries in your smoke detector, any similar device, just, it's an easy date to remember to do it.
Before you do it at three or four o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Or call the fire department, and we shell up, or they do. Okay, sorry. Uh, Councilmember Meredith?
I wanted to bring an item in, uh, the second meeting of February. I wanna recognize the businesses in gulf that have participated in the, uh, prescription discount card program.
Yeah.
We continue on a monthly basis to beat the city of Rancho Cordova, which is the only city in Ran- in Sacramento County that's also participating in this, in total number of users, total number of prescriptions applied, and the total percentage of savings. So-
Great.
Our businesses are doing a great job with, uh, I don't even know, a fourth of the population, a fifth, I don't know if there's the numbers, yeah?
Great.
So, if that's okay with council, I'd like to bring that in our-
Yeah.
-second meeting in February.
Good.
All right.
Okay. I just wanted to say happy new year to everyone. Be safe, stay healthy, and be happy. So that was pretty close. Uh, we actually will reconvene back to closed session. We had one item left. So, just a reminder to council and staff, appropriate staff.
Prescription.
Thank you, everyone, tonight. We will adjourn the meeting. Actually won't adjourn, but we will go into closed session in twenty-five.